September 11, 2019. We have Bruce Freed, Joanne Lout, Bob Watts, myself, I'm Harry LaCattilia, Tilly, Evangelista. We have the technical review agent Larry Graham, and of course, our town planner John Cashel. Moving to the first item on the agenda, do we have a motion for the minutes? Can I hear one?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of June 12, 2019, and August 14, 2019 pending discussion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made, seconded by Bruce, motion made by Bob Watts. Any comments, discussion? Everything look all right, Tilly? Good? Any questions or comments? We're looking at August 14 first. We'll take them in reverse order.
I don't see the East Main Street vote on there.
Where are you? What number?
On page four of five.
Page four? Four and five?
Hmm.
Okay. East Main Street, what we, this, because that was done at a previous meeting. This is August. That was done at the meeting Friday, 14th. All we did was, we just signed the paperwork that night.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Bob, you all right? Yeah.
I'm ready.
Bruce? You go with 14. I did have one thing on the 14th, August 14th. It's line number 206, John, and it's on page 5 of 5. God bless you. I think Planning Board at the same time, and I think that word is supposed to be location.
What line is this?
206.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, anybody have any comments as far as the June 12 minutes?
I commend autocorrect. Really? Incredible. No?
We got board of selection will be reversed, and they'll agree on that. That would be a shock. Everybody good on the June 12?
Mm-hmm.
Tilly, good?
Yeah.
With that being said, with that one correction, I'll call for, I'll call for approval of the June 12 and August 14, 2019 minutes.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Great. How about the vouchers, kids? Want to do the vouchers?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Do you want to do June 12 minutes?
We did them both. We did them both in one pass. That was the motion you made, I believe.
Yep.
Is everybody clear that we were voting both the 12th and the August 14th?
Yep.
Tilly, you clear on that?
Yeah, all right.
Vouchers? Joanne, were you going to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the voucher to H.L. Graham Associates for technical review for $198 East Main Street in the amount of $255.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the H.L. Graham Associates voucher. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0 unanimously. We can sign that, I believe, Bob, if you pull it out.
Sure.
We need three signatures on that.
I make a motion to approve the voucher to reimburse to administrative assistant for postage in the amount of $7.85.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Bruce. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We can sign those. Done, done, done. Beautiful thing. Onto correspondence. Do we want to approve these as read with 1 through 6? Or do we want to go over them? Your call, folks. Board of Appeals notice, just special permit, special for an accessory apartment, Rowley, Newbury Port, Newbury, excuse me, Boxford, Groveland, and our Rowley Planning Board. We'll hold on that seventh one.
Sounds good.
So 1 through 6, motion to...
Accept the correspondence. Don't read each one, 1 through 6.
1 through 6. Second? Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that carries unanimously. 1 through 6 are considered as read. We'll hold that seventh one until later in the evening, okay?
Point of where, we only need three signatures.
Absolutely.
We're done.
Good. You do want to take, that notation, that we do want to take action on the 7th. So we discuss it on number 7. With that being done, we can move into the public hearing realm, and we will start with 103A Lakewood Drive, one lot subdivision. This was continued from July 10, 2019, John? Am I correct?
Yes, correct.
103A Lakewood. Do we have the applicant? The applicant for 103A Lakewood Drive? Really?
Well, I mean, for the record, they are asking for an extension.
Okay.
There's a motion to that effect, and they have executed Form H.
They have an executed Form H until when, John?
They have all the way through December 31st.
December 31st?
Yeah, and I'd appreciate a vote from the board this evening accepting that.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Let's open, let's open the public hearing first, guys.
I move to open the concurrent public hearing on special permit, definitive subdivision application, calling for the construction of one lot court located at 103A Lakewood Drive.
Is there a second?
Avenue.
Actually, I have to research myself, don't I?
Okay, up here, says avenue, all right, never mind. Is it avenue or drive?
Lakewood Drive. Lakewood Drive. Let the, let the record show that before the vote was taken, Bruce Freed recuses himself from this vote. Is there a second for Bob's motion to open this?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to open the, open the continuation of the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4 to 0 with one recusal. Second one is to grant an extension. Does somebody want to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the extension request by the applicant through 31 December 2019.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion is made by Bob, seconded by Joanne. Any discussion regarding the Form H? Tilly? Good? No discussion? We good? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4 to 0 with one recusal. Form H should be done, and we can sign that, sir.
Yep.
Right here. Whatever you do, don't give it to Bruce.
Thanks.
Is there any member of the public that came here for 103 Lakewood? If you'd like to make a comment, or you have anything new to say, anything, by all means, sir, please...
Sal Tescoverde, is there any new information?
To my knowledge, nothing new has been submitted to the board, sir. Oh, wait a minute. No, there was some information, right?
The only request, or I should say, the request for an extension, the applicant has only been able to obtain from the power company a 20-foot wide easement. So he's had to revise the plans, and he hasn't, he wasn't done with the revisions.
And a 20-foot wide easement, this is a, this is a court, a court needs a right-of-way of 30 feet. So it's a concern, certainly have to look at it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Members of the public? Going once? Going twice? By all means, please state your name, please, for the record.
I'm to Lakewood Drive.
I'm sorry?
So my question is, you know, they are requesting an extension through the 31st. Is that, I'm just wondering why so far out?
I can answer that for you. Extensions, what we do is, we do them by quarterly basis, because if you have six, seven open hearings at any given time, and the extensions to decide these, to make these decisions, are staggered all over the place, you can find yourself in the position where you continue something, and you didn't get a Form H extension, and you basically get a constructive approval, because you didn't decide in time. We're under legislative timelines to make decisions unless extensions are granted mutually by both parties, by the board and by the applicant. And if we go beyond those timelines, basically, the applicant can go down to the town clerk and say, they went beyond the timeline, I get a constructive approval, grant my, grant my permit, and it's, then it's out of our hands. So what we do to, just to make sure that we're always moving to the next quarter, we're certainly not going to try to go all the way out to December. That's not the intent at all. It's just to, to track it and keep them all consistent. Anybody else? Any comments, any questions, sir?
Dan Rose, 16 Lakewood Drive. So how, how many extensions are allowed? Does this go on indefinitely, or...
Until the board has as much information as it needs, or the applicant could just call it and say, that's it, no more, you have as much information.
Withdraw.
Yeah, well, no, at that point, they're not withdrawing. Technically, no, they, they're not asking to withdraw, they're saying that they've refused to grant a continuation. And in that case, John, correct me if I'm wrong, at that point, if, then the board must make a decision. Frequently, what happens is, at that hearing, more questions are raised, to which the board doesn't have answers, and so the board is in the unfortunate position of having to decide without any information on those questions, and usually what happens is a denial or lack of information.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? I think everybody's happy as far, well, everybody's said their piece. Board members? Not you. You're recused.
We're going to continue this?
It sounds like, is that a motion, sir?
I believe that they've requested it.
Yeah, and the choice is either the September 25 meeting or the October 9.
Yeah, just for the record, I am not going to be here on the 25th.
Don't make that motion.
But you'll be here for the 9th of October?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we need you.
Yeah.
We always need you.
We so need you.
So a motion to the effect of the 9th would be.
So I move to continue this public hearing, date specific to 9 October, as you mentioned.
Motion to continue to the October 19, 9th.
9th.
October 9, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Joanne. Discussion? None? All in favor to continue this? To continue this hearing, the continuation of this hearing to October 9, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries you 4 to 0 with one recusal. I'd say thank you to the applicant, but they're not here. Thank you to everybody that came for the, for the hearing. Thank you. So that's 10...
October 9.
9, 19, all right. 103 Lakewood. Next up on the agenda is 5565 Central Street, CBS Plaza. John, you want to just bring us up to street where we are on this, or? Actually, you know what? Hang on a second, if you will. I'll accept the motion to, I'll accept the motion at this point to open the, the public hearing for this.
Well, yeah, that's not, it's not a real motion.
Yeah.
You can wing it.
Oh, my God.
You can wing it.
You trust me? Always she is without a script, and now you've got to, you just...
I'd like to make a motion to open the...
I haven't had time to adjust it yet.
5565 Central Street, CBS Plaza.
Motion is made to open the, reopen the continuation of 5565 Central Street.
Second.
Motion been made by Bruce, seconded by Joanne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The hearing's now open.
Okay.
Hi, would you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Yes, Brian Fogg from Eric O'Connell, on behalf of the applicant.
Mark Janowitz with J.D. LaGratson Associates, architect, on behalf of the applicant.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, pleasure.
We're real close here, huh?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so, too. I think so, too. John, you want to...
Yeah, I'd like to report.
Just bring everybody up to speed?
Yeah. From the August 14 meeting, the board approved this, and a draft decision has been prepared. The two outstanding issues with the draft decision, and this is in accordance with working with Brian on this, the, one being Georgetown Affordable Housing Trust, and Brian, you may have some more up-to-date information than I have on that, if there's been a negotiation for a final decision on that in lieu of situation.
Yeah.
Then the other issue has to do with working with town council to hash out the easement language for the town.
That little triangle of land that will help the fire department?
Yeah. Board members got a copy of that photo that I prepared, or if you didn't, I think did.
I didn't. Sorry.
Okay. But everything's still being worked on. I can pull it up on the board if necessary tonight.
Okay, that might be helpful, John. That might be helpful. Thank you.
And that was working with the fire chief and the police chief on site.
Sorry.
Good, good.
And it was Harry going in the building that day.
Was it?
It was him, he was in there waiting for me.
Oh, when you, the three of you, yeah, yeah.
We were just, you know...
Hanging around.
Yeah, no.
No, you were viewing, you were viewing the...
Yes.
Conducting business.
We're here now.
Yeah.
Anything you'd like to add?
So what I'd add is, the two conditions that John described are 11 and 12.
12, yes.
I think it's page 4 of the copy that I have. And with respect to the affordable housing condition, as you know, as a condition of the special permit, there must be a condition on this point to, to hold us to the bylaw, which requires that we either provide a payment in lieu or provide a unit. We're at a fractal, 0.7, because of the number of units that we have, and so we've been suggesting that we do a payment in lieu, just because on a seven-unit apartment building, it's just an administrative challenge, is the word, I guess, the nice word I'd use, to have an affordable unit maintained by the, by the owner, you know, in perpetuity. So the payment in lieu seems appropriate here. In discussions with the Affordable Housing Trust, they gave us a number, which is included in this decision.
572.
Right. And they came up with the idea, well, maybe we can use that money, instead of just putting it in the trust, maybe we'll use that money to help subsidize units in town that would then allow us to get units on the affordable housing inventory. That's fine with us, we're happy with it. We're not sure what our role would be, and I'm not sure the trust knows either what our role would be beyond paying the money, do we have a role to play? But I drafted the condition so that that discussion can keep going on, but this board can move on with the decision. We have the number, we have the obligation, and we have to enter an agreement with the town on this point, but we can continue to do that. The catch, of course, is that we don't get a certificate of occupancy until this is resolved. So as a zoning matter, we can't open our doors, or at least the second floor doors, until this is done, but we have time to work with the trust and the town to figure out the, the approach that works best.
I... Comments?
Yes, I would like to know what, what was in the written agreement? Where is that agreement?
The written agreement would be, would be forthcoming, and once the, once the trust and ourselves and the town work out how this is all going to go, because it was a new idea that was brought to us, which, again, we're okay with, but we think it makes sense to have the condition this way and let us do those negotiations, rather than have every single detail ironed out in, in a special permit condition.
I don't think that's how the bylaw reads. It has to be arranged prior to or payment made. So I'm wondering, what you're, what are you talking about in agreement? You have to pay...
Well, it's a, I think, if I can paraphrase, there would be simply a condition of the approval of this special permit, that we resolve the legal language, and we have time to resolve it, and we would not allow to have a certificate of occupancy until it was resolved. And it does, it's a time matter, we know, we're committing to resolving it, we're going to do it with the trust blessing, and it doesn't seem like we should hold up or delay the decision based on, on that. It's a condition that we will resolve it, and legally, we'll do it in the, the manner that the trust prefers, and...
That's, excuse me, can I stop you right there?
Of course, yeah.
It's up to us to decide what the trust recommends, so they don't make the final say.
Okay, well, or, or the town, I should say, the town...
The planning board does.
The planning board, and, correct. But it's still...
All right. So if we don't have that agreement, how can we make a decision and agree to this decision?
But there's, there's many conditions in planning board decisions that, that still have to be met in, you know, that aren't legally defined until later in a process.
True.
And if, you know, this is, it seems that, you know, we, we would like to get started with the project this year, and, and waiting another month to hash this out in legal terms doesn't seem necessary.
If I may, if, you also...
Yeah.
Forgive me, and I, I get it. It sounds to me as though the, the figure isn't disputed by either you or the, the board, the Affordable Housing Trust?
Correct.
That is an agreed-upon number?
That's the number they provided, and I've run it by the client, and they're okay with it.
Did you agree to this number? Because I didn't do any figuring, did anybody?
I actually, my calcs came a little back of napkin, came real close to that.
You agree to it, John?
No, 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 no. It's not my position to agree to it, but that's the calculation...
That's the correct...
...that the applicant has worked out with the Affordable Housing Trust and...
Did you verify it?
Yes, with Paul Nelson.
Okay.
Now, the only thing I have for information is that they're still working with you on the final decision on how this is going to be handled. Is that correct?
Right, because they gave us the number, and they said, well, normally we do a payment in lieu, just goes into the trust, and that's what the bylaw calls for.
Right, at which time they can use that money...
However they want.
However they wish.
They've come up with this idea, can we somehow use this, use this amount to subsidize units in town, so that the, the units that we're subsidizing would count towards the town's affordable housing inventory? So you'd actually get credit for it, not just money, but actual units on the inventory, which we're fine with how, how it's used, and if we have a role to play, we'll, we'll play a role in that, but if we don't, that's what we would be discussing with them once we move forward.
Just what that role would be.
You're bringing DCH into this? DHC into this?
Again, this is coming from the trust, not, not from, not from us. We, we'd like to do a...
Party in here? You're not a third party, I mean, the Department of...
Well, I think that...
What is it, what is the department?
DHS.
DHS, excuse me, very, my apologies. Department of Housing and Safe Services, or whatever it is, the state, the state board.
Potentially, if it's going to get on the inventory, that, that's, they would have to be involved, yes.
I don't understand how it would. I do not understand the conditions under which it would.
Once the deed, I can explain some of it.
Yeah, maybe you can, yeah.
Once the deed is established that there's going to be the money given for the unit...
Right.
Then it would go to DHCD, because they would have to confirm that deed is coincential with, with their loss to make it on the list. But when you pay money, it's a different, different process. Now, if you're just going to come in with 157, the check for that amount, what is holding you up from doing it now?
I, I think what Tilly's saying is basically on the same line of, as, as beneficial to the town, as that sounds, why not a simple statement that that set amount, that agreed amount will be delivered to the trust by the applicant prior to occupancy permit being issued? It sounds like a very easy condition?
I don't disagree at all.
Okay.
When we, when we left the last meeting, the, the charge was to find out what the Affordable Housing Trust recommendation is, and come up with a condition that would be consistent with that recommendation, which is what we put together. It's ultimately, as Tilly has pointed out, it's ultimately up to the planning board to decide what the condition says, so that we are in compliance with, with the zoning bylaw on this point. But this is the figure they gave us, we've, we've not disputed the number, and this condition is an attempt to come up with a way that we can work with what the trust reported that they were thinking about doing. But if, if we're going to simply have a condition that says, this is the, the number, this is what we have to pay prior to an occupancy permit, that's, that's fine with us.
That is simpler.
I agree.
Much simpler, there's very, very little hanging...
Did you get that, John?
There's very little hanging.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm looking at the language of 11.
It's quite a lot.
No, it's a lot, but it says exactly what you wanted to say already.
Well, it's saying there's an agreement and lump sum staggered payment.
The final sentence, I think, is...
Staggered payments?
Staggered payments...
I'm not getting the staggered.
To subsidize units in town, or based upon another...
Another agreement hanging out there, and if that agreement is with DC, DHCD...
DHCD.
It's with the town, it's an agreement with the town.
I don't even know who DHS is.
Department of Housing.
Can it just be edited, is it?
Yes.
Just, that's just the simplest.
So all that language about staggered payment should be removed, and you just pay the check.
It's fine with us.
Just edit it, you know, make it simpler.
Give the check, and then let affordable housing do what they want.
Do what they wish with it, right?
Right.
Bruce?
That's the way it sounds to me, yeah.
What do you think, Bob?
That's, I completely agree with you.
Can we massage that language to like, one sentence that basically says, the in lieu payment will be that amount to be paid to the trust prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit? Is that easy enough?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because you did your job, I don't see why they need to be involved in the next step of what the trust uses the money.
I don't think they, I don't think the owner wants to be, believe me.
There's a lot to this, it is confusing.
No, I think, no, I, I agree. Totally agree.
So if I can help, I'll say, in this regard, so that language is going to be changed, we're on agreement. The next condition, 12, is still being worked out with Attorney Yeagman.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, any discussion I want to hear.
No, that's, I was basically saying that, that it's not their job to, like, get their money, they pay their money, then it's, you know, affordable housing, it's their role then to figure out, okay, this is what we want to do with the money to, to deed over a unit somewhere for, for housing.
I agree.
Like, it's too separate.
I agree. It, it, it's adding a level of complexity there, and staggering payments.
That's not their responsibility.
Right.
Right.
You've got to follow up, the town has to follow up. It's too many places where it can go wrong.
Exactly.
Get very confusing, and I'm for the simplicity of that simple language. Are we, are we all in agreement on that?
Yeah, get the money, then let the trust do what they want with the money.
And the trust is free to do whatever they wish. If they can do something that puts a house on some, something.
On that list.
On that list.
Whatever, yeah.
That will be great, but.
That's the goal.
I don't know how they would, they would do that.
But that's their responsibility.
That's their charge, absolutely, that is their charge. 12, absolutely.
Okay. How long is John Ickman going to take to do this?
I thought I would hear from him before this meeting, but it didn't happen. Up on the board there.
Yeah.
That's the easement area. Just to orient you with this, this is the corner, the southern corner of the Public Safety Building right here. So going right across, in a straight line to that point, this boxed in area, this triangle, that's the area for the easement that the fire department and the police department would like to acquire. This is all publicly owned, town owned land. And the, the boundary of the property is right here, say it's a half a foot away from the existing catch space. We didn't find a iron pin down there, and there's, there isn't one indicated on the plan, but that's where the town boundary is, right there. And the sign is on town land, the existing sign.
Looks like it's half and half, huh?
Yeah.
We're sharing with our neighbors.
It appears with this line, it's half and half, but it's all on town owned property.
So John, is, is, is town council working up a verbal description of this, this triangle?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And so that language of item 12 just has to be finalized also. There's two issues outstanding at this moment.
And is the fire department going to pave that?
No, we have the chief, we have the fire chief Mitchell right here, chief?
Yeah, basically, what we're hoping to accomplish by acquiring this small pie is to kind of straighten out our ramp. Because right now, our engine one, when you look at the Public Safety Building, is all the way to the left. So they're kind of, when they back in, they kind of cut, kind of do this to back into the bays. But also keep in mind that the police cars are coming around the back, and they're coming down the same way as we're, as we're pulling out for emergencies. And the goal is to construct another roadway, kind of like push that lane over towards the end of the property so it'll allow for more real estate to pull out onto without coming so close together.
Which makes sense.
And also, and the other thing too is, is as we look at future expansion for the next few years, and, you know, that's going to play into it as well.
So that is going to be, that's going to be paved and graded and paved.
Yes, yeah. That's the goal.
It makes sense, yeah. And, and just to verify everything, the applicant, as you're, as a representative of the applicant, that is essentially what we're, what we're looking at.
That's what we had in mind, that's what we were expecting. And again, the.
On behalf of the town, I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you on behalf of the fire department and police department.
Absolutely. So John, we're going to, we're going to work that language into the decision at some, in some way?
The language that's in there now.
Is that an appendix A that we can refer to?
We could. It's just that in going over this with Attorney Ickman, he wanted the language a little bit more shored up than it is.
He wants it a little tighter.
Yeah.
And not only the description of the easement, but this, this condition, condition 12?
Yeah.
I understand, okay.
Just a little bit more definitive, and he wasn't able to get to it in time for this meeting.
I understand.
Okay.
Any other comments?
So we should continue it?
Well, actually, at this point, I'd really like to look at special condition number four for a moment, if we may.
Michelle.
That would be on page three, and.
I have five.
Is that liability insurance?
Yeah, what, why, why are you annually being required to provide proof of liability insurance to the planning board and the enforcement office?
I use boilerplate language that the board is using in other decisions, we're happy to not provide that insurance information if you don't.
John, any issues with removing that?
Uh, no.
Board, any issues with that? Good. What about number six? Same deal?
Same deal.
It's a, it's just a, it's just a remnant, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Scratch that one too.
Scratch that one too, and just keep in mind when we're talking about 11 and 12, they're going to be renumbered, because we're going to bump up a couple, so everybody, I'm not even going to do that complicated math in my head, because I don't want to confuse myself.
Where did you, I might as well.
I'm so sorry.
Where is that page?
This is six, and this is.
You're taking this off?
Number six?
Did I copy that?
And number four?
Yeah, there is none. And number, and, and number four, yeah, the subject, okay?
Okay.
Right?
I got you.
They're relevant to another firm. Good.
Well, why are you going to take, that sounds like a good one. Six. The permit holder shall test annually storm water retention treatment basin.
Well, and we don't have any on site, so.
We have, we have the. Well, that could be an issue, because we don't have a baseline, and, and Tilly really, this will be going before the Concom, this is.
It's already been before, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's more or less under there.
Board will remember this, that was pertinent to Healthy Farms.
Yeah, that was Healthy Farms.
Still being relatively new, I didn't know if that was a built in, you know.
Condition.
Condition for all permits, but that was because of Rowley's Water.
Exactly, exactly, Rowley, the Rowley Water Board, or somebody came over and asked for that condition to be put in, and it's, it turns up every now and then.
Yeah, it's not needed in this decision.
So on this parcel, they do not have a storm water basin?
No, they have, no, they, they have storm water basins.
Yeah, I thought they did in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the back.
I kind of like this.
My things had to do with the fertilizer that Healthy Farms.
Exactly.
Because they were using chem.
I don't think there's going to be too much nitrogen coming out of them.
There's no infiltration, there's no bathroom.
And nothing you can do about that.
What they have here is a lot of overflow, but if you think from the back.
Right. I think, I think the concern at Healthy Farms was that there would be nutrification of the basin. That basin was in Rowley's water supply area, their zone two, so it was relevant.
I understand, but I mean, this, this two has.
We're not, this is, well, I mean, you certainly can have your, your concerns, Tilly, I'm not going to diminish them in any way. I'm not concerned because this isn't in a zone two, and really not concerned because we have no baseline to compare it with, once we test it. If we are looking for a baseline, then we have to change that to add a baseline. And I don't think there's any advantage to it, there's, there's no fertilization, nothing.
And we have been through conservation.
Yeah, if conservation was concerned, I think they would grab.
Did we get anything from conservation?
On this?
Did she just telling us that they've been there?
We, do we have a, we have approvals from them.
I don't think we have no work conditions yet, because they're, they're holding that until we get the certificate of compliance on the old orders, but we have been through, that's the only outstanding.
We've been through, yeah, we, we were told we didn't need to come back anymore.
Well, they're not adding to the building footprint, they're not adding to the impervious surface, they're making.
Actually reducing the impervious.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but they're changing the back.
Okay, well, how about this, all, somebody want to, Tilly, do you want to make a motion to keep number six? Is that what you're saying? You'd like it, you'd like it if you want to make, you'd like it if you want to keep it?
I like the way, I like this, because, but I don't want to overstep the Concom's responsibility either. But I think this is, this should be checked into to see if the Concom did make any restriction like this.
Okay.
Then we don't know that, you know?
Or a condition subject to conservation approval of the, I mean, something as simple as that.
If it is, if it is an issue with Concom, I'm sure they're going to, they'll include it with their order of conditions.
Does everyone feel comfortable removing it and having John check with the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
And if, if Concom was looking for it, but somehow didn't include it in their order of conditions that you haven't received yet?
It's, we have some outstanding certificates of compliance that hadn't been issued for work that was done a while back. Once those get issued.
Then you're going to have an OOC, then they'll issue the OOC.
Right.
It was the early 90s.
Yeah, I get it, yeah, old, old conditions. They can certainly add it if they haven't issued their order of conditions yet, the seat, the hearing is still open.
That's my understanding, yes.
Well, I mean, that's certainly something, John can bring this to their attention, and does that work?
Yeah, that works.
Are we all in agreement that six is coming out with the stipulation that John's going to go to, you know, send something to?
Steve.
Steve, yeah. Is that good, John?
Yeah, and on that note, later in the meeting, if the board, we take a recess and you want me to amend 11 and 12, and run the amended language by you.
Actually, actually do it for a signature, you mean?
That's what I'm getting at.
Well, I would like that, sure.
I've got one, and can I, can I just, I made a note here for some reason about waivers? Go to the board for the record of the waivers on page five? What was I talking about here? Oh, waivers granted, from required site plans. Uh-huh, okay, there were two waivers. Can I hear a motion for those two on page, on five, just for the record that the board did consider them.
Did waive them? Mr. Chairman, I move that it is recognized that the board has considered the waivers printed on page five of the document regarding drainage calculations and site distance.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the, to grant the waivers, one and two, as shown on page five of John C. Arport. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, both waivers are granted, for the record.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so usually I'm a little bit concerned that we don't have final language that we can sign immediately to close, but it sounds like we need to change some language with Jonathan Ickman?
Yeah, yeah.
And refresh my memory, John. If, if the board were to vote to close this public hearing tonight, how long would the board have, something's flying around here, how long would the board have to issue its decision?
You couldn't close it, I don't think, Mr. Chairman, because we're going to, we're waiting for more, we're waiting for Ickman, we're waiting, once you close it, you can't get anything more.
The board can't accept any more information, is my understanding, but John can certainly write the decision based on language that he receives.
But then since the meeting, the hearing's closed.
Right.
We would be committed to whatever language there is.
Right.
Yeah.
Without looking at it.
I understand.
Can we continue?
Yes, yes, it sounds like we're continuing. I was just trying to close it up.
If I may, closing the hearing means the board would not be able to take any more testimony on, on new issues, but if the board were to vote to close the hearing, the decision, as long as you voted on the conditions subject to final language from council and from the town planner, there's no reason you couldn't do that. It would be on those two items, 11 and 12, which are, I think, fairly clear what the issues are. Finalizing the language, right, it would be, I guess, nine and 10. Finalizing that language with council and the planner on those points, I don't see why the board couldn't do that.
I, I'm not really getting why we couldn't either.
It's information.
I think we can. It's not testimony.
It's information, it's any information that comes in.
You're not comfortable with it?
Not comfortable with it. You close the hearing.
I'd like.
Then you finish your deliberations on it. The deliberations is still continuing after the close of the hearing, pertinent to the board and whatever changes you want, so.
So if John comes in, John Ickman, he does a statement, he does his due diligence, and the applicant doesn't like it for some reason, or we don't like it.
Maybe that's a negotiation that can take place between the town and the applicant to see if, is that language acceptable?
Put that in the.
No, figure it out, work it out. Yes, rock and roll.
I like it cleaner, I don't know. It's wavy.
The only way we'll do it cleaner is if we continue it.
Yeah. When is, when is the, when is the date of the, the town council? The date of, do we have a decision? Well, Form H, what's our Form H on this? What do we have?
The 30th, so we.
30th of this month?
So we could do it on the 25th meeting, yeah.
30th of this month?
Yeah.
We can hold it.
We would need a super majority, so I'm not going to be here on the 25th. Is four sufficient?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, this is a, this is a special permit, right?
The only thing I can offer for the board's consideration is that, you know, we go through the next public hearing, before we adjourn tonight, that I work on language that the board agrees to.
Gotcha.
And we sign it, and then we'll be in business.
And if I may.
How can we do that? I'm sorry.
I was just going to add, it seems like we're in agreement on the language on 11, it just needs to be penned to paper, which John can do. 12, conceptually, it seems like we're in agreement. I don't know what additional language.
12 only has to be amended to make reference to town council's recommendation on the easement.
Description of the easement.
Yeah, description of the easement.
So 12 had subject to final approval by town council in terms of the form of, of the easement, that would seem to do the trick.
Yeah.
Because we've described the purpose of, of the easement, which is specifically to expand the access ramp for backing fire apparatus in the Public Safety Building. It's not like the easement's going to cross our whole property, it's just for that specific item, so I.
And substance is agreed upon.
Yes.
Right, yeah, there's no dispute on that.
It's just the technicality.
I mean, it's not more information, it's just, it's just a description of what we've already received.
The specifics.
Right, Tilly, are you, are you good with that?
The problem is we don't have the actual document.
I would, I would love to, to sign it, but I just, when it gets to legalities and lawyer, particularly lawyers, you want to be precise.
Yeah, but you know.
You don't want to play around with it.
We do know the premise. The premise is it's a good use, the town changed the use to allow for residents above for this district. We hashed this out, how many public hearings now, three?
This is our fourth, yeah.
You know, just, there's minor technical language that needs to be amended, town council's in agreement with the easement. What I'm saying is, I could amend the language this evening before we go home, and if everybody's in agreement, sign it.
And we're happy to stay to get that done tonight.
I mean, the only problem I have with it is that we don't have John's language.
Yes.
Attorney.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't necessarily have that with anything. It's subject to.
Okay, guys, okay, I will accept the motion for continuation to September 25th.
Second.
No, I'm not making it or accepting it. Do you want to make it?
Yeah, I move the, this hearing be continued.
Excuse me, yeah, September 25th. 25th, is that next meeting?
Yeah.
25th.
The hearing for 5565 Central Street, CVS Plaza, to be continued until September 25th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to continue the September 25th meeting, made by Bob, seconded by Dorian. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, sorry, but we're going on and on in a circle.
So close.
Yeah, well, not as close as about yours.
Almost there.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
And John Ickman will have it by the 25th.
Yeah.
Tomorrow. Bedtime.
Probably will have it tomorrow.
That's how it is, yeah. Unfortunately. Timing's everything.
It is, it is, timing is everything. And next up on the agenda, 51, clerk says, uh, next one is 51 West Main Street. 51 West Main Street, safely review application, rehab and reuse of mainstream, main, existing main structure and construction of seven new townhouse residential units. Is that the motion to?
We're reopening, we're reopening.
We're reopening, we're reopening. I move to reopen the public hearing for 51 West Main Street, map 11A, lot 32.
One second.
Motion to reopen the continuation of public hearing, raised in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Hearings open. Hello, folks, if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Triple Quality Development LLC and John Colentoni. With me tonight is John Colentoni. Also with me tonight is the project engineer Thad Barry, the project architect John Dugger, and our wetland consultant Mike DeRosa. So you have everybody here tonight. Thank you very much. This application was opened at a hearing on May 23rd. I wasn't present at that hearing. John was present, and he made a presentation at that time. The matter was continued to your June 26th meeting. There was no substantive information taken in at that meeting. There was a lot of discussion about continuance and that sort of thing. So, since the opening of the public hearing in May, we've really made a good deal of progress. We have gotten the first round of comments from peer review consultant Larry Graham. We responded to those. We have received a second set of comments, which we received today, from Mr. Graham, and I am pleased to say that the original eight-page comment letter has been reduced to two. So that's good. I think we're making good progress there. I have submitted a letter to you relative to addressing of the property. That was requested by the Fire Department, as well as compliance with the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw. You're looking at me like you don't have that.
Where do we have that, John? Did we get that?
What's this?
The letter about the Fire Department.
You're referencing a letter?
I sent in a letter, August 5th, that dealt with the compliance with the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw, as well as the addressing of the property.
I must have missed that one?
You don't have it? I have a copy with me, and I'll give that to you. John, you received it, yeah? Because you and I talked about.
Yeah, I'm sure I received it. They didn't for this evening.
Okay, all right, well, we can talk about it. So, just to refresh your memory, if I could, for a moment, just going to go back, and since I didn't make the initial presentation, I want to make sure that we've covered all of our points. We are seeking site plan approval for the redevelopment of this property at 51 West Main Street, which you know is the settlers' antique building. The property is about 1.76 acres. It's located in the CA zoning district, and it is now vacant. The project involves a number of different components that really make it an exciting project for this area. It involves the historic restoration and preservation of the existing antique building that's located at the front of the property, which maintains the streetscape. We add some new commercial space to the front of the site, and we're proposing seven new residential dwelling units in a townhouse style in the back of the property, all complying with the dimensional requirements under the zoning bylaw. The project also involves a significant cleanup of an otherwise degraded site, and stormwater management features that, we have an existing property, this property, as our project engineer will tell you, and as you saw in the stormwater management report, takes in stormwater not only from this site, but also from off-site, and it is currently going untreated now into the wetland area. And part of this project will add a treatment component, which will result in healthier wetland area, healthier pond in the back of the site. About a year ago, a little over a year ago, John started conversations with the Historic Commission, and really, the project and the restoration of the antique structure at the beginning of the site, as well as the ultimate design of the townhouse buildings, was done in concert with input from the Historic Commission, so that the antique building, the addition to it, and the townhouse buildings in the back work in harmony to reflect the historic aspect of the property. We met with the Economic Development Committee, and you do have a letter of recommendation in your package from them, as well as from the Historic Commission. You've seen this before. Before we went to the Board of Appeals, you did give a recommendation as to concept for this project. In February, we received all of the zoning relief necessary for this project in the form of findings and special permits from the Board of Appeals for the use and the redevelopment of the site. So right now, we are before you for site plan review. We have an application pending in the form of a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission for the work as well. And I think landscaping, I just wanted to add, in addition to the general design of the townhouse styles, we also submitted to you a detailed landscaping plan, and that too, we think, works together with the design of the building to complement the historic structural aspects, as well as enhance and improve the wetland habitat. The landscaping materials that have been selected for the site, particularly those in the rear of the property, have been selected by our wetland consultant to improve the wetland habitat, not just to add buffer, not just to add beautification, which they certainly do, but they improve and enhance the wetland habitat. So we've got a lot of things going on. We've got preservation, we've got commercial enhancement and development, we've got a residential component here into the downtown area, we've got maintenance of the streetscape. We provide parking in compliance and exceeding the requirements of the zoning bylaw for parking. And I think you have a complete site plan package. And at this point, having all of that now on the record, I don't know if you would like us to review, and our project engineer to review, what he has done with the plan in response to Mr. Graham's comments, or whether you want to go to Mr. Graham. I don't know how you'd like us to proceed. We're happy to do however you'd like to do it.
Just to begin, I'm sure everybody on the board recognizes this is a new plan. We just got this last week. This is the first time we saw this last week, this new plan. From my perspective, some of the things that we asked for are there, and they're very nicely done.
Good.
And.
Glad to hear that.
Some of the things are missing, but we can go into that a little bit later.
Yep.
At this point, globally speaking, the largest thing, it was unfortunate that we had so many continuances, that you asked for so many continuances, because during that period of time, the chief of police chimed in with a letter about the 12-foot-wide egress in the back of the building. What are we calling this? Is that north, or is that? Yeah, the northern side. Many concerns, safety concerns, as well as concerns about the parking on the street.
Could I ask the date of that letter? Because I did talk to John today, and wanted to be sure that I had all of the correspondence, and I don't think I had anything from the police chief.
Chief, we, that was his original letter that we went over, and then he subsequently.
April 22nd?
Yes, I have that one.
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
The memorandum?
Mm-hmm.
Basically, it gave me pause, and I was a little disappointed that you folks weren't made aware of that before all the changes were made?
Mm-hmm.
Before you updated the plan to this stage of the game.
Mm-hmm.
From my perspective, it's one of the two things that I think stand out where I'm not totally comfortable with playing that. I think that this site would benefit greatly with the removal of that driveway, not only for a safety aspect, where you'd be removing an intersection, if you will, where cars would be going out onto Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
But I also think it would be beneficial overall, because it would remove impervious area. That could be part of a buffer strip planted, natural, well, not natural, but man-planted, but that could be a pervious buffer, much in the same way that, right now, your engineers and landscape architects are trying to create the buffer that the ZBA asks for between the neighbor and the development. You may, may, and I'm not sure, I'll look to Larry and I'll look to the experts, you may be able to just remove that block wall in that fence and just create a, how wide is that? What is that, 12, 13 feet wide, something like that?
It's 12 feet anyway, which is the requirement.
12, 15, a 15-foot green strip, intensively planted with trees and shrubbery, can create an incredibly nice buffer.
Yep.
Doesn't all have to be deciduous? I mean, you can have some evergreens there, eliminate the need for the block wall.
Yep.
Eliminate a lot of impervious area, which could greatly help you as far as, I don't know, you spoke very highly of treatment of the water, and I know that'll change the calculations somewhat, but the less water you put into a treatment system, the better it's going to treat the water that comes out.
This site.
That's just me.
Okay.
I'm one member of the board.
This site currently has three curb cuts. That exit curb cut that you're talking about now is existing. When I read the chief's April 22nd letter, I didn't read this and interpret this as meaning that he is suggesting that be removed.
I didn't mean to imply that.
And I believe.
I didn't imply that.
Okay.
I said it gave me pause to look at it and recognize that this is another potential area where you could have an intersection. I just don't believe that you need an additional exit, when the exit that you have here is, I believe it's 22 or 33. I can't tell from the plans, because the plans say it's both.
I'm going to leave that to the engineer to tell you whether that.
Can the engineer chime in?
That, how wide is the curb cut that's in and out?
Right now?
Yep.
No, the proposed one, then.
It's 22, I mean, it's 24, 212 foot length.
Because the plan was showing 33. It's a different.
At one point it was, and we reduced it.
No, it still is.
Okay.
This version was.
I.
You have to change the plan. This is landscape view, right?
Right. I don't do traffic design, so there are people that we have for that, and Thad is that person. I did notice, I believe in Mr. Graham's comments, he commented favorably on the traffic circulation that we have proposed, which involves that residential-only egress. And I think that's what I'm going to say about it. I think the engineer ought to speak to that. But there was a reason in the review and in the layout why that was kept for the residential egress from the site, and it provides value in the design. And I don't, and as I said, I didn't see where the chief was suggesting that that be removed. So I think perhaps our engineer should speak to the internal circulation, how that was developed, and why it works the way it's proposed. Thad?
Thad Barry from May and Speed of Time Group.
Come on up, Thad. Don't flop a chair.
The exit lane that we have over there was just to help separate out the residents from having to go through the commercial and retail part of the property. It allows them, and it's going to be a small amount of traffic throughout the day, it allows them to just to come in the entrance and exit in a separate lane, as I said earlier, not to get into the traffic around the new commercial building. It also, although I'm not exactly sure, the use of it for a fire truck, but it would also provide emergency access for emergency vehicle to get on that side of the building for any emergency, for anyone inside the building. So it does have value that way. I don't know, it's probably too close to the building for a fire truck, but it does provide some type of access to that side of the building in case of some type of emergency. But it also, basically what it does, it just simplifies the traffic within the area of the parking for the front property use.
Board members, thoughts, concerns?
I'm a little confused. I'm trying to read what the first one, and probably Larry should speak, I think. Yeah. Because when we're talking about, on page five, the first one, it says in there that Larry has written that we recommend a 24-foot one, 12-foot paint lanes.
Yes.
In and out.
I think Larry's referring, well, all of you can speak to Larry. Larry, you can speak to yourself. You're referring to the wide entrance.
That's correct.
Right there, right?
Yeah.
That was three lanes.
That was three, it was 33, right?
33 to 24.
Somewhere in the plans, it still says 33, but, yeah, I, you good with that, Tilly? Is that, you want to leave it to Larry to?
Well, it's, all right, I'll only take a couple minutes. I want to hear what Larry has to say myself. I would be supportive of removing, unless there's a very good reason, removing that excess on that side where the butters are. I don't think that's necessary at all.
This exit here.
Right. I think that what you had said was a good reason why we shouldn't eliminate it, but also because of the police chief's letter, which is, I think, is a very good point, that we're going to have an exit, and so close to this exit, on a very busy traffic road. So I think the less cut curbs you have, the less you're going to have of problems. So I think that where we come in, that should be changed, so that you can come in, have a breaking boundary line, maybe a landscape of some kind, and an exit going out on the other side of that landscape. Many projects do have that, and with the same amount of space. You know, where you have, close to the existing building, something on the side planned there, if you need more room, you could eliminate that or decrease that, and just move it over and make an exit and an entrance, right, at the same area.
Are you referring to here? You put an island, you're talking about an island in there?
Right.
Would you have three lanes or two lanes?
Two.
One in, one out.
Could we get some, could I have Larry chime in on that? What's your feeling about that, Larry?
Well, in my first review back in June 25th, let me say one other thing before I get started. I think my letter of yesterday is being misinterpreted as being reduced from however many comments I had.
Oh, sorry, I didn't read yesterday's.
Excuse me.
Came in yesterday, I didn't read it.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
But I'm just saying, Ms. McCann suggested that the letter of yesterday was reducing X number of items down to two pages or whatever. That was not the intent of my letter of yesterday. My intent of the letter of yesterday was for tonight's meeting, and I tried to pick out the hot points for discussion this evening that board members might want to chime in on, as opposed to some of the minor points which can be ironed out.
I'd very much like to get to each one of them, Larry.
Okay.
But first, I think.
Back to this.
5,000-foot view.
I commented.
On the ground.
I commented on this under vehicle access, driveways and parking in my June 25th letter, and I stand by what I said, and that is that I believe that the layout, as they have it here, and as Thad pointed out, a couple of good points there, I think separating the commercial from the residential to some degree, the exit is separated from the commercial, the entrance is not. The point of having a second means to get back to the residences, which are all located in the back, should you have some issue at the access drive, the wider access drive in and out, is a good point. I had some recommendations with respect to the other end of that, the, is this thing pointing here, John?
Yep.
Which I'll get to when we go back to the.
Let me get this going here.
Okay. When we get back to my letter of yesterday, but I had, there we go. Oops.
You're going to be late on that. Where would you like to go?
Right there. Where the pointer is, I had some recommendations I'll get into.
Sorry, where is the, oh, right there?
Yeah, in a little while, about that particular, the width of that and how that might be changed, perhaps, that would still allow emergency access, as well as clear access, but I'd like to see that closed off, so that the commercial and retail people don't feel that that's their area too, to either park in or drive through. So that's deviating a little bit from your question, but my take on the layout is that I took no exception to that concept. That's where I stand.
Forgive me, Larry, I'm not understanding. If that were closed off, how would the residents gain access?
Narrowed.
But no, that's their exit only.
Oh, that would only be an entrance.
Oh, is that where the arrow is now? It's not going to be closed off. I'm suggesting it might be closed up, tightened up.
Oh, okay.
So that it's not so inviting to the commercial and the retail people to stray down there and park in those five spaces. It has a few other advantages that are outlined in June 25th letter. So with some signage, and it could be done such that mercy radii is maintained there. We can get into that in a minute. But back to your original question, I'm comfortable with the design.
You like the second?
The second drive?
The egress.
I do.
On that point too, Harry, we had a chance to converse about this. As it stands now, they're proposing seven condo units. Any given day in a condo complex, half the people aren't there, and you are only talking about egress traffic. So this isn't planned for any type of heavily utilized driveway. That's really the most important thing. This isn't tied into the commercial.
We have people going in and out all day.
Right. It's not that type of driveway. So I know people don't like driveways being built beside them, but, you know, this isn't going to be a busy driveway.
Which, excuse me, but gets back to my point about closing that off, so that it's not inviting those commercial and retail people to go back there and. not inviting those commercial and retail people to go back there and find their way out, which would increase the traffic on that narrow.
Coming up with the proper signage, you know, resident-only access for residents on private drive or something, coming up with the proper signage to keep the traffic associated with the site out of that. Because if they do go down in the back on a regular basis, they're going to use that egress. And then that egress becomes a lot busier than what we're talking about here.
From my perspective, I look at it as though it's superfluous. It's an exit that's just unnecessary. If you don't have an exit, you can never have an accident there. So I understand it's a very, very low level of service. I get that. Not many people there.
So on that point...
But I'm looking at it from the traffic position.
Right.
As well as the environmental position where it's green.
Yeah. But on that point, okay, the counterpoint to that is that a second means of access, whether it's a house, you know, a second door, when you have the opportunity to provide for a separate means of access, it does provide the insurance of two means of access to get to a site for emergency services. That's important for any site. Now, the other side of the point is, with all the development that is proposed for this particular site, can one two-lane driveway, one ingress, one egress, handle the traffic needs without causing congestion? That hasn't been proven one way or the other by the traffic consultant on this. So do they need that other driveway for volume associated with the site? Or can they live with two lanes, one in, one out?
Mr. Chair?
And does that also take care of the emergency needs of the property? That we'd have to get weighed in on by the fire department.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I had a nice chat with the chief this week.
Chief who?
Actually, both chiefs. I'll start with the chief of police. In his general view, he had no problem with the safety of how this was laid out and everything. He did bring to the attention of the one parking space problem on the main road, and however the board wanted to handle that, if that was a no parking so you could see clearer, or a trade-off where we're closing up one entrance that's there now, that could create the other space, so it'd be a trade-off. So he felt it was his position to make that known, but other than that, he didn't really have a problem with this. And then the fire chief, who gave me even more time on the phone this week and said that he was going to be at the meeting, gave me the impression, and he's here, so I'll let him speak, that I feel, as the person putting this together and building this, very uncomfortable with only one curb cut. Because if anything ever happens where that curb cut, whatever crazy reason, is blocked or whatever, and there's no possible way of getting in there through another means, I would feel very uncomfortable with that. The chief gave me the impression that he liked that other road there in case they had to get an emergency vehicle down. Usually I think minimum, you said, ten feet, and that's 12, so it just gives us another way to get in there. And now let me put my sales hat on, which is not as important as the safety, obviously. These units are owner-occupied in the back. They're not rental units. And these owner-occupied units are not $100,000, $150,000 units. These are high-end. So you have to give them some high-end type thing. So just to show them a simple exit for them alone gives us some marketability to give the high end that they deserve. Now, if you remember back in the May 23 meeting when we were first here, it was the chair, with all due respect, things change.
Absolutely, absolutely. I was recommending...
All the traffic go out there.
In and out, only one in and one out.
Right. So we were, you know, perplexed by that.
Absolutely.
Because we also want to respect the neighbor next door. We know it's going to get a little bit more usage than it does now, obviously.
Yeah.
With the residents in the back. But we thought this is a good compromise where it's only the residents going out of there and no one else. And if I may, the chief was so kind to come tonight, I wasn't sure if we could see what he thought.
Absolutely. Anytime anybody wants to make comments.
Basically, my position is, I look at that second exit as a, you know, emergency access. From a tactics and strategy standpoint, you've got hydrants, you've got a hydrant before 51 West Main on the left side, and going past 51 West Main, you have a hydrant on the other side of the street. So in the event of a structure fire in one of those units, I've got access to two hydrants that, you know, whether it be a mutual aid truck coming in from Groveland, with the possibility of tagging a hydrant and going right down that lane. The other thing, too, is with a commercial structure in the front, during the daytime, we don't know how much business that's going to, you know, draw. If I can't get my ambulance in there for a medical emergency, whether it be down into the residential units or in, at least I've got another way of getting in, from that standpoint. Plus, it gives me access to all four sides of the settlers' building, where if you took that road out, now I only have access three sides of it. And if you talk about putting an island in for the entrance exit, that's going to just shrink my ability to get my apparatus in there for the turning radius as a zone. Those are just some initial thoughts. But from a tactics and strategy standpoint, in the event of an emergency, I'm going to need a second means of egress to get apparatus in, because we could clearly get jammed up in that area. And again, the time of day is going to determine. If it's the middle of the day, we don't know how much that parking lot's going to be and what traffic we have coming in, though. So at the minimum, that other access point or exit point, for bare minimum, should be if there's a concern about exiting onto West Main Street, should be emergency access only, at the minimum.
I'm trying to balance the public safety aspect of the emergency with the everyday occurrence of, I don't know, 14 vehicles trying to get out. And I'm looking at, I don't know what the likelihood or the probability is if you have a car, if you have 14 vehicles exiting and exit every day. I don't know that. I can tell you if you don't have the exit, it's zero.
Absolutely.
I am also cognizant of the fact that there are people on the other side of that. There are butters. And the ZBA specifically charged this board with providing buffering between the two. I find it difficult to think that it's an improvement by putting a block wall and a fence when you can put trees and grass. And I respect everything that everybody said. Your marketability, I take that into consideration. I can't put marketability over public safety. I can't put that above your broader concerns. Remember, the use here is very, very different. Folks that lived next to this place when it was settlers, when it was an antique shop, maybe 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock at night, that was it, it was quiet. Now you have residents that are going to be leaving every time they leave, they have to go by there, every time those lights have to hit. I'm going to stick to, if you will, my guns, that I think, as one member of the board already, that that should be eliminated. And I haven't heard from three members of the board. Tilly, I think you...
I think so.
Who, does anybody have any feeling one way or the other?
Is there any way to get a little bit of a buffer zone but still have that extra driveway? Or is there just not enough room to do both?
What about, you talked about fencing.
Yeah, we were willing to do whatever the neighbor of the board would like down that way. On the new renderings, we were showing a fence.
Right.
And one of the concerns with the fence was to make sure that one at the end of the driveway was sloped down so there's no site blockage either way. So we corrected that and showed that. But if the board didn't want to have a fence, they wanted to have what I call a natural fence, I'm sure we could create something like that that might be better. Or a combination of both. Thad would know better than I on kind of what we have to work with, if we have the room to do a little natural plus a fence.
We could probably do a combination of both.
What kind of fence? A nice fence or a chain link fence?
Oh, no, no, a nice fence.
Chain link for industrial.
I don't want to assume anything.
Not for downtown Georgetown.
It's a good question. We don't use...
I don't want to assume anything.
Not legit, but you don't.
We're aesthetically.
I had a couple of thoughts. One, the first thing, what Larry said to tighten up the residence only there, why not put a gate in there where the residents have a clicker? There's gated communities everywhere.
Wow, that might be...
You know, that way only residents are getting in. You have no commercial people possible to get in.
And when the fire department can just crash through immediately?
Well, they would have it.
They would have the button.
There are communities that have gated where, you know, the fire department has a pop that goes right through. And you could do that.
They have the fence for the high school.
You know, the other thing, too, is that, as I stated about the other side being emergency access only.
Right. So on the other side, I'm thinking, where the concrete dumpster pad is there, if you cut back in so you could come around and use that last piece of the driveway as only emergency access, so that the residents can come back around this way through the parking line, so they're going around and back by the dumpster pad there.
Yeah. Cut coming this way.
Yep, that way. And then that last piece of the driveway is only emergency access for...
Because if you take that road out, and I've got to put apparatus down in the far corner, I'm backing out. I've got no place to turn it.
That's right. So we leave it for you.
Yeah.
Residents to come around, and they can only get into there with a gate. That's just my thought on it.
That's a good compromise.
So when you're thinking that residents would be able to exit that way, too, correct?
Yes.
The gated way? They could enter or exit that way?
That's right, they could. But they can also come around and exit back past the dumpster pad through this other lot here behind the existing building on that green area, through the handicap parking area. So they could exit two ways, come back out through the gate or come around that way.
But that would require two gates.
At this point, forward, that's green.
That's emergency only. Well, it could be grassy, grassy field where they could...
How do you plant that?
That's a good, that would have to be thought of.
You get some seed and you've...
But you need it for emergency vehicles over there, though.
So you could still get emergency vehicles, and if needed...
But there'd be some grass there.
Yeah.
I think the emergency, just restricted to emergency would be the best way.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, if it's restricted to emergency access, just so that we know, it would have to be surfaced and paved and plowed.
It defeats the whole purpose.
It would.
The purpose of what I'm saying.
But we could gain some space for a natural fencing that way, as the chief was just mentioning. It wouldn't have to be 12. We could do 10 feet.
10 feet.
Gain another two feet, a beautiful natural fence down that whole emergency lane, which would be most of the neighbors' side there.
I didn't think the neighbors liked, wanted a fence or any...
We're willing to give the neighbors...
Are there any neighbors here tonight?
Yes.
I'm sorry, would you stand up, please, and get a closer or state your name?
I'm Tricia Krupnick. I live next door.
Are you the folks that...
She's the neighbor.
We're in the gold house next door.
Krupnick.
My husband's not here, he's traveling.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that mean he doesn't care? Is that you, right?
Absolutely not.
Can chime in on this? I mean, this is, this probably affects you more than anybody else in Georgetown.
Well, Kelsey lives across the street. The driveway is really troubling to us. I mean, we're worried about our property value going down. It's so narrow, traffic, safety. Who's going to maintain the fence if they put a fence up? You know, it's people park, I believe it's illegal, and right in front of settlers now. And then they park legally before our house and after our house. And it's lethal trying to get out of there. I mean, if I'm taking a left out of my driveway, there are times, especially if there are larger vehicles, like an SUV or something, you know, pretty much you just have to close your eyes and gun it sometimes because you can't see around everything. It's a huge safety issue. And it's so close and narrow. That's our, keeps us up at night, that driveway. It's right on our property. And then it's going to be even harder.
I'm sorry, you have to state your name.
Sorry, it's okay. I'm Kelsey Schroeder. I live across the street from the Krupnicks. And I mean, similar to her, to Tricia's problem, if we have the entrance and then also an exit, which is basically a budding Tricia's driveway, it's just going to be that much more traffic trying to go out into the main street. And it's, you know, for them and for us, it's tough enough already to get onto the street, let alone if there's that much more opportunity for people to be turning onto the street. It's just going to create kind of...
And headlights when vehicles would be exiting?
Obviously, I mean, as you mentioned, you kind of hit the nail on the head, like the lights are going to be a big issue for us. We already are kept up at night when, you know, the policemen pull people over on the main street and, you know. It's, I guess it's part of the nature of living on, you know, West Main, but it is going to be more of an issue if there's more traffic. And as you mentioned, it was previously a residential area, kind of closed down at 5:00. It's a very quiet neighborhood. We all go to bed early, so it's just going to be kind of more disturbance to us. So if we could have some sort of natural kind of, you know, protection there, I think that would, that's kind of our biggest concern as well. In addition to the safety of turning out when you really can't see who's on the sidewalk, who's in the street, you really, you really don't know what's there, and that's scary to us.
And our, you know, our garage is right smack there. I just don't see how they're going to build a fence. I just don't see it. It's so close.
And these are the things that, this is why you have site plan review. This is why this board has to take those things into consideration, the butters. And again, I'm...
Through the chair, could we...
Glad we got what we got.
Through the chair, could we ask the two neighbors, because we're very concerned and want to take all this in, if that was only an emergency entrance, like you talked about a few minutes ago, so it wouldn't be used on a regular basis at all, and we put up a natural fence, as it seems like they were more interested in instead of a fence, how they like that idea?
If vehicles would not be exiting it?
I'm sorry, what?
If vehicles would not be exiting it?
No.
Just for emergency.
Just emergency entrance if it needed.
What, John, help me out. What was used as certain...
They have pervious pavers.
Thank you. Pervious paver, couldn't think of it. It's very natural, very grassy-looking.
Yeah, they're rocky.
But it does, to my understanding, have the ability to support emergency vehicles, heavy emergency vehicles, if necessary. Again, my only concern is, you know, that helps with the impervious area.
Has to be plowed, though.
It does have to be plowed, and they are quite expensive. So that has to be figured into the equation.
The upkeep of plowing in New England, pavers of that type is a much bigger problem than if it was pavement being plowed. So...
You'd rather just pave it?
But we could pave it, however slightly narrower, as the chief said, rather than 12 feet, maybe do 10 feet.
It's going to be a minimum of 10.
Minimum of 10, so 10, 11, something like that, and then do plantings rather than the block and the fence.
See, the problem is, under site plan review, right into the zoning, we can't, it has to be a 24-foot wide, and it has to be a 12-foot wide.
When it's a traveled wave, if it's an emergency access only, I think you would have the ability to grant that.
I'd have to reread it. I'd have to reread it.
Yeah, I think you could, or you certainly have the right to waive, in conditions. You could say, this certainly meets a public good argument, and if it's sufficient, if it's only going to be used by the fire department or the police department, and 10 or 11 feet is sufficient for them to give more green space, I think you could grant that waiver if you found that the regulations require a waiver.
How, what type of visual buffer and barrier is possible if you have the 12, if you have to keep 10 feet open or 12 feet open? I'm not really sure. It looks like there's about 14 feet there or something like that. What type of visual barrier buffer?
You have enough room in there to do green giants if you want.
I don't know what that means. I'm sorry, I'm not...
It's an acavites that grows two and a half to three and a half feet a year. It grows fast, as long as, you know, as long as it keeps being trimmed. I mean, there's enough room to do something pretty nice there.
As opposed to the block wall, would you be able to eliminate the block wall and the fence? I'm wondering at this point, will a block wall... I'm wondering at this point, will a block wall and a fence be adequate? Or would it be better to take the block wall and the fence out and make it an emergency? Make a green wall, as you said, what do you call it, Green Giant? What was it?
They were arborvitae.
Like arborvitae?
Yeah.
I don't know if that provides the buffering that I'm thinking of. Again, what I'm thinking of is a series of smaller trees, evergreens, but it takes away the.
It's not wide enough.
It takes away your access. Your access is taken away there.
A properly maintained row of arborvitae, you know, trimmed up. You know, maintained. It's probably your best bet to provide privacy and aesthetics. I have a row of those in between my brother-in-law's house and my house. He maintains them.
Okay.
He's the one with all the compliments and.
And you still talk to one of them?
Oh, yeah. Maintain the piece at all costs. And they're over, they're over 25 years old, this row, and privacy they provide. And the sound barrier, you can't replace it, you know, with anything else other than that. But it has to be properly manicured.
What's your width?
The width can be two and a half to three feet, definitely.
So you could get a double rope? You could get a staggered rope?
You could even, you could even be pushing four, but I think it's, it's more like three feet.
What, a staggered rope?
No, no, no.
Be possible?
No, this is a straight rope.
I just want to call your attention to the revised plans on sheet C4. And in that area that you're talking about, the proposed wall height is three feet. As you, as you might turn into that back parking area, the proposed wall height is three feet. So you can't do away with the wall and just stick, you know, two or three foot wide arborvitae in there because you need the wall.
Are we talking about going all the way down there anyway? I thought the concern is more up here.
Is the wall for grading?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So how far would, I don't know if you can depict this, Larry, just by looking at this, but how far back would you go from the road with the arborvitae? You have to maintain 25 feet back relative to site distance.
The wall height is just about opposite the aisle of that parking, that rear parking. Just about where it says six inch ductile iron waterline. That's about where the wall height is shown on the plan, which I agree to, agree with, is three feet. So you can't get rid of the wall in that particular, from this point here.
We could go that far back with the green wall, as I call it?
No.
The natural wall?
No, it's, and Thad can probably speak to his plans better than I, but it's going to go from three feet to nothing where it says begin shade wall. It's going to go from three feet to nothing where it says end shade wall. So you've got the highest wall where, where you're going to be turning in, if that's the route that you go here, turning into that rear parking area.
We can't get off this one toll booth.
We have enough guidance now.
Help me out here, Larry. The ground doesn't do that now. The terrain doesn't go that way now, right?
They've got topographic shots in there, which we know that's what they're using and going by. They've got, I don't know if you can look at sheet C4 of your revised plan.
Which number is it?
Sheet C4.
C4.
You may not be able to read it, but just about opposite the abutters house to the north, there is an existing grade there that says 94.6, I believe. The proposed grade of the road is 92. So you're two and a half feet lower than the abutting grade to the north, northwest. And then, as the plans indicate, when you go easterly of that, you see a top of wall at 94, bottom of wall at 91. That's what's proposed and I presume that's taken from existing topography.
Wait to hear this.
So you need it, you need a, you need the three-foot wall there.
Get away altogether.
Because.
Give us our three lanes back and we'll make it a gated.
The land to the north is higher.
Higher, correct.
Yeah, this is going to be 94 right here and this is 91.
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sure.
So we've put a million different scenarios together on here, way more than what the board is seeing and Larry's seen. You know, it's been two years of ripping this apart with all different ideas. And, you know, I've gone and knocked doors and tried to talk to neighbors and everything and, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. We're trying to keep everyone happy. And in a project like this, it's impossible to do. But here's an idea. Call it an offer, call it an idea, call it whatever you want. We'll do away with that driveway altogether. No emergency access. We don't agree with that. We agree with the fire chief. But no emergency access. We do away with it altogether. Give us more room to do a green wall, whatever. You give us our three lanes back and we do a gated community. So now that way.
You like that idea, huh?
So now that way, when you come out, everyone's coming out that way. But you have one lane that will just turn right. You have another lane that would be going left. And then you have the entrance lane, which is only one entrance lane like we have now. So now the neighbors, I think, I hope would be happier. And we still have something that we think is going to, to flow. And at least we have a wider opening for a little bit of safety going in and out of the property. I still agree that if that got blocked up, I would like to have another entrance, but we're trying to come up with a win-win.
So you're thinking one in.
Two out.
Two out.
As it was originally proposed.
Right, that was the original. Right.
But we'll do away with the other driveway, make it the green space, or whatever, whatever we're going to call it. And then do a gated community, you know, over here.
Go to the back.
A gate back here.
A gate back there.
There's your value back.
And one, one thing, I don't know if you want to even contemplate this, there is a curb cut there already. You maintain the curb cut. You landscape it in such a manner that if you did have the gate, emergency access.
You'd drive right over.
Yeah, it would be clear to do that.
Sure.
It wouldn't be plowed, but it would be.
Just grass.
Right.
Chris? You like that idea?
Yeah.
That's, that sounds good.
I'm just curious how, so the center lane is in and then you have the other, in it.
No center.
There's three, three lanes.
Three lanes, just like the original plan showed. So one entrance in lane and then coming out, you've got a left and a right.
And so the left and the right out are one piece and the in is separate from that. It's not three together.
No, be three together.
It is three together.
So how would people know which, when they're coming in?
It's going to be signed and marked, signed and marked.
So we wouldn't have head-ons there?
No.
Bold arrows.
But it's only one entrance.
Right.
So if you're coming down or going up Main Street, you know where the traffic's coming from or going to.
And then I'd like to expand the idea just one more step, now that we digested the first part. So the idea of looping around?
Yeah.
We have that as a, some type of entrance-exit as well. So there's another way of getting in and out of the residential in the back in case there was an emergency.
Well, wait, what's? All right.
So let's pretend we get a bottleneck where the gated community is that we're talking about, right?
Okay.
We would have another opening over here by the dumpster that could get to the residential units in the back.
You have to be paved there, John. I don't think you need that.
Over there?
Oh, okay.
As I was saying.
So you go in from Main Street, but then you could go to where the dumpster area and that'll allow you to, no.
Just out.
I don't think you.
It's still going in and out here where we talked about the original gate.
Mm-hmm.
Would have the capability.
You'd go in and out here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. Two lanes, in or out.
Right, and it'd be gated.
And then you'd be able to come up here and go around.
Correct.
Which kind of defeats the purpose of eliminating this. Elimination should be this way, right here.
So we're concerned about the whole thing, not just the first half of it?
It's, it's this house and the view that they're going to have, this becomes the buffer so they don't see this. They may see a little of this.
This is green space though, right?
Yeah.
But it's not landed.
It's empty.
It's just grass.
Yeah.
It's just grass.
Can't have deeprooting trees.
But the neighbor's home is right at the edge of that green. It's not down there where the existing building is, settlers. It's further down.
I think.
It's like right there.
Somebody help me out. This, this right here?
Mm-hmm.
What is that? Thad, you drew it.
It's the home of the.
That's the home, right?
Is that the garage or the home? Garage, garage.
Yeah, this is the garage. The house is.
The house is further down.
So if people were looping around there, so we'd still save half of that driveway into green and we.
But I think the lights are going to hit the house in, from the parking lot.
But that's the garage there though.
Those are the drive right lower.
If they're turned around here, where they're proposing now.
But remember, if we do the, the green natural wall and say we come halfway down past that tree behind the new addition of the commercial building, yeah, right? Keep going to the right a little bit. So if that's a natural wall of trees or bushes or whatever it may be, there's no lights that are going to hit anything, because when you come around that corner, you're going to be hitting trees that were planted that's going to block that whole area. It's going to be a way better situation than what they're looking at now.
And it would only be for emergency vehicles anyway.
This thing here.
It would be for the residential.
I don't think it's unnecessary. You're going to have your gate here, right? It's not going to be a gate in and out here.
What about the grading of the wall will have to be done? Will the trees, plantings absorb?
The wall's not going to take up, the wall's not going to take up the whole width because we're doing away with the road. We're going to be able to plant across.
You've got.
Again, from my perspective, just me.
You've got 946 for the grade, or 94 feet for the grade. And 92 is existing. So will two feet absorb the grading? Or will the road, wall still be necessary?
Oh, I understand.
Wall's necessary where he shows it.
Yes, absolutely. So you can't.
You couldn't slope it if it was natural. You couldn't grade it that, I think is what someone said.
No, you'd be on the other people's property without an ace which you couldn't do it.
So.
Mr. Chair, could the chief add?
If I may interject, if you look at Georgetown Housing Authority, Russell Way property, Hemlock Lane, which runs parallel to West Main Street. If you go down Hemlock Lane, it's a dead end, but there's a gate there.
Yes.
It's an emergency access gate.
Absolutely.
And that's just for.
Used to be a bunch of rocks.
Right, exactly. We moved the rocks, we put the gate in. I kind of look at that as the same thing as we're looking at here. As that road being an emergency access gated, not used, because it, because if you, with Hemlock, if that gate wasn't there, we'd have a lot of bad crashes because of the contour of the land with the roadway. It's a blind area. So that's, that was the solution.
I forget what the.
So it gave us an emergency access.
Very uncomfortable.
Coming in the other way, leaving an emergency on Hemlock.
How many times have you had to use it?
Thank God, not any time yet.
It's one time, one time.
Oh, really?
It's only going to need one time.
Oh, it's only going to need, absolutely, yeah.
I always err on the side of questions, sir. I'm not a gambler.
So I might have not been explaining myself correctly, but what we were talking about with the dumpster, I was talking about emergency-wise.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be where residents are coming in and out of there.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to, like, I feel like if we wipe out the entire thing, that we're ignoring the expert of the chief who's here. That's, like, I feel very uncomfortable with that. But so I'm trying to come up with something that you don't come up with too often, a win-win.
Yeah, and I hear you. And thank you for trying.
So you wouldn't have to worry about the lights because it's only for emergency vehicles.
Correct.
So that loop around by the dumpster is only for emergency vehicles.
He had a leabout.
All right, I'm, if I.
Can't make the turns.
What?
You can't make the turns.
Emergency vehicle couldn't make a turn in there, right? So it wouldn't even.
Thad said you can't make the turns. What I.
I'd have to see. It's going to have to be done out, drawn out.
We know what they're looking for.
Yeah.
All right. So I think we've heard your suggestions. I think we are on the right track.
Maybe we need some scenarios on paper.
Let's, let's have our engineer, and I know our engineer is meeting with Mr. Graham tomorrow on other things, but let's revise the plan based on what we've heard. I think we kind of have some general agreement on this, but.
Would you like to throw it over to Larry now? Larry?
Oh, sure, sure.
It's direct to other major wrenches that we have to get through.
Okay, this is 5,000 feet?
Yeah. Now, we're going to change this ingress egress to three lanes, right? I know the site is incredibly tight when you're trying to come up with adequate parking. But part of the site plan review is to put parking spaces where you actually can put them and they can be safely used. So you have three lanes of traffic now, right? Then this ingress is going to be busier by the elimination of the other one. I'm not saying enormously busier, but it will be, it will be busier. So you have these parking spaces here, right? So you have a lot of in and out movement that's associated with what I think is going to be a coffee shop.
That's the only thing we have to talk about, what's going to be here.
Yeah, that's the second, that's the second of two wrenches that we got to talk about. But when you look at the site, I want to shrink this down a bit. When you look at the site, where do you put parking? You know, where can you aesthetically put parking or where could you even fit additional parking necessary to better handle these spaces? You know, I just don't see it. So then the other, that has to be figured out.
Can I just chime in here? I mean, it looks, maybe I'm incorrect here. What are we looking at? This is a construction entrance here, but the curb cut is there to there, right? That's a curb cut.
That's the existing. That's two lanes, but we're going to make that three lanes.
That's, that's two lanes?
Yeah.
That's an in and out.
Or is that?
That's a.
A curb cut. I mean, you're saying that's the curb.
I think that's, that's very, very big curb cut. That's more than two lanes. That's more than two.
So do we, you know, just to analyze this here, so we, cutting into this green area to create the width necessary.
Probably, most likely, yeah.
So we're going, we're going in an easterly direction.
You're going to need it.
You know, but again, and I want Larry and I want the traffic engineers to chime in on those parking spaces, which are going to be the busiest. There's going to be the most, the most maneuvers of parking spaces on that site are those because they're closest to the entrance to the proposed coffee shop.
And they're in and out, yeah.
Yeah. And so you're backing in and out, you're crossing over three lanes of travel servicing, yeah.
Can someone clarify where the entrance to whatever this is, is?
The entrance to this coffee shop?
Do we have floor plans?
You see that?
That's the entrance? What is, what is the structure to the right there?
This is the new.
That's just a new building.
The new housing.
Does that?
No, that's new commercial addition.
Oh, it's new commercial.
That is the door?
If you can follow this arrow for a second.
Where's the door for that?
If you can just follow this arrow for a second here.
I'm sorry?
See this arrow? Just follow this for a second. So the existing building footprint that remains is this dark shaded area.
Gotcha.
So when you go out there and look at it, the existing building extends back here and then it goes this way, and then it goes way out here. And all that building area is gone.
Right.
Okay, replaced with this striped area.
Right. Proposed, but my question is where, it's a, it's an attached structure to the existing building. Where is the door? Again, I'm sorry, is it, is it in the corner there? Isn't it to the right and up, John?
No, I'm, I'm thinking that's right here. Is that correct?
That's the existing building, right?
It goes into the existing, oh, John Tucker, I'm the project architect.
Yeah.
Where you have the arrow there, you go straight into the existing building. There'll be a corner and that will access both buildings.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
You go right away.
What is that door? Is that just?
That is an access door for that space, emergency egress, and also deliveries.
Mr. Chair, this may help.
Yeah.
A colored rendering, it might not be exactly perfect, but see the entrance area here into the footprint of the existing building? the footprint of the existing building?
Okay.
And then this is the new addition attached to the back architectually to match it. And then you have an entrance in here?
Gotcha.
Okay.
And that's the only entrance, John?
That's the primary.
Those are the primary entrances, of course, you'd have, you'd need a.
John, why don't you hold that far and I'll hold this end because this does much better depict what, what's going on here. So there's your one lane egress that's going to go right out of the site. This would be your egress to go left out of the site and then you have your other drive that goes in and out.
Goes in.
That's your, excuse me, ingress. So looking at this, these parking spaces don't look as onerous when you're, when you're looking at this. When you look at that, it does, but here you see.
They are what they are.
That, that's not any different probably than you would see.
Anywhere else.
Anywhere else.
And to be honest with you, in my opinion, people are coming in and out of this. These are going to become the most popular parking spaces.
That's, that's my, that would be my understanding, but depending upon how, what the use is. Again, I, I'm not clear on what the use is for the lower level. I'm not clear what the use is for the upper level.
And we don't have those. What we've done for parking purposes is we have taken what the use that requires the most parking.
Okay.
For purposes of parking calculation, we've been very conservative, okay? What use that happens to be a coffee shop.
Okay.
So we've said, all right, we'll use that for parking calculation so we have enough under worst case scenario. But we're not going to know until we have a project to market. And so we're looking at certainly some small office, maybe even offices for a live-work situation for people who live in the back. They have their office in the, they live in the town, in the townhouses, they work in the front. So some small offices, some small retail, and maybe there might be a small coffee shop or something like that. The use is all permitted in this district, but we won't know exactly. But what we did, again, for parking purposes is we said, okay, what's the worst case?
So let me ask this, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm fading off here to, drifting off. There are going to be two uses.
No, there could be more.
So if there are more than that, then how do we know we have enough parking?
Because the parking is based on the square footage for the particular uses, right? Under your, under your zoning bylaw, so that's how we've done the calculation.
So for instance, the coffee shop, let's say we're going to have a coffee shop.
Coffee shop has 2100 square feet.
About 30, 30 people coffee shop.
Right.
The parking, Thad, is, is, is based on those seats.
On the seats.
Right.
Right.
And then, and Thad, you can help me with this, on retail and office, whatever, whatever parking on the square footage, whatever the most parking is needed for one of those, that's what we went with.
Gotcha. How did you calculate in the, the employee parking?
That's all calculated.
It's all calculated.
Under your bylaw.
Your bylaw covers that.
Follow the bylaw.
Okay.
Yep.
So we don't have to add extra for the employees?
You do. Our bylaw restricts it to that. You have to add it.
You have to add that in?
Yeah.
But it's been added, right.
But it has been added in?
Yeah.
It has been added in.
And how did you, do you show those? Is that like on the front page?
Thad, is that on one of the sheets of the plan set? It should be.
Sheet one.
Yes, it's right on the C3.
Larry, you check those numbers? We're good with that?
Oh, yes. I mean, it's, it's all by square footage and seats, so.
I don't know what you're doing.
I don't know about the real use, you know?
Yeah, we're not going to run into a problem because it's the maximum use? Or you pick the largest number?
Yeah, for instance, for instance, if all of a sudden we, we, we got a chance to do a restaurant of 100 people, we can't do it.
Well, this is it. I don't want to, I don't want to run into problems. I want to make sure you do have enough.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have septic system. We wouldn't have septic system and we wouldn't have parking.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not in the position where your, your hands are tied because we didn't put enough.
The zoning.
And then you go for a permit and sorry, you don't have a parking places, but you already made it. You already built the thing.
When you did the CBA hearing, didn't they ask you for parking? Wasn't that part of their decision? How many spaces?
We showed it because it was on the plan. Parking falls under site plan review.
I know, but it also should have been in with this, the use. It should have been part of your zoning board decision.
And, and it was because it was shown on the plan then and, but it is part of site plan review.
Yeah, I realize that.
Yep.
Is this a good time to turn it over to Larry and we can start to go through? Maybe what we should go through is your original review?
Well, what I did was.
How do you feel, Luke?
Well, yesterday's letter was to, was to bring up the issues that I felt would be important to the board to maybe, and important to the applicant to go over tonight so they have some direction and the board could feed in on their ideas. So that's what I.
What do you recommend? Where are we, Larry? Take us through, please, if you'd be so kind.
Under, I, I separated these into different categories. First was planning and general comments. And I had two there that I wanted to bring up tonight to talk to the board about. Comment five, it's a tough one. They are proposing seven units. I suggested that the board and the applicant might look at the reduction of the, of the project by one unit, dropping number seven and taking number five and six and turning them slightly clockwise. Bob did a good job there, turning them slightly clockwise.
Oh, Danny.
And, and that would eliminate that sort of awkward dead end that you have going to the south. I recognize that that's not a comment that the applicant probably wants to talk much about, but it, it looked to me like a, maybe a twist that would make this project a little more appealing. I'll, I'll run through all of them, Harry, if that's all right, and then we can come back.
Absolutely. It sounds like a great idea. What, what about number four there? I'm, I'm a little confused on that. Comment number four? The one right before comment five? Yeah. Are there still some differences between Dugger architectural? I, I'm going by your, your letter?
Yeah.
Dugger architectural renderings and the.
Yeah, the rear, they, they did revise the site plan. I, I still, I don't see that the two are together yet. So I, I don't know what the board is going to get here in the way of patios versus decks. And maybe you want to talk about that with Thad and the architect tonight. So if you want to do.
Is there a response, folks? Some kind of.
Mr. Chair, can we take one at a time? That might make it faster and easier.
Absolutely. Let's deal with number four.
Okay, so.
So what is it for? Deck?
Deck and patios.
The decks and the patios?
Yeah.
Thad, can you address that because that was corrected?
We took the architectural plan from John Dugger and placed them on the site plan and that's what we have right there now. Shows the decks and the patios.
And Larry, do, do you think they don't show it or what's your concern?
I like the explanation because I, I don't know what they're really, you, you see the pink is a patio.
That's correct.
Is a patio?
Pink is a patio and I guess the brown with the dots is a.
A balcony.
A balcony deck, right? A deck off of the second floor?
It's actually over part of the first floor.
It's, it's a deck off the.
Do you have a rendering for this?
It's like a rooftop deck on top of the first floor.
Exactly.
Is that a cutaway or is that a full? Is that the extent of it?
That's the.
Is that just so we can see that the deck's below it?
No, no, that's, that's exactly what's happening.
Okay.
Here you go. This will help a little bit. Again, it's a color rendering.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It might, it might not be perfect, but it's pretty close.
I'm not seeing.
So there's your decks.
Yeah, the decks. Right. If you're, if you're on the second floor, it's a, it's a deck.
Third floor.
Perhaps you should take a look at the floor plan. I think you understand it.
Oh, okay, neither of the floor plans would help.
I'm just trying to show it with everyone.
Makes sense.
The first, the first two floors project the back of the main box of the building. On the third floor, where the projection isn't, is a lift deck.
With sliders.
With sliders.
Okay.
Okay.
Larry, are you?
I just want the board to know because, because initially the two were not coordinated.
Okay. And we're, now we brought it to our attention and.
Yep.
We're all on the same page with that?
Yep.
Great, let's move along. Number five, we do need to.
We've got six versus seven.
Yeah. So number five was, again, to take the last two units, separate them, put them in as a separate building, turn them in and eliminate this subtly dead end.
Are you going to do the thing?
Can you point out where, where you're at? I'd like to.
Don't even worry about it. John, don't even worry about it. So I'll just respond to that.
Okay.
So since day one that we've done this project, we've been very consistent. We really needed to do more than seven townhouses. Took four months to get from town council, the interpretation of the bylaws that we thought were correct and we ended up being correct with the very help of the building inspector. So seven townhouses is what we can do here. We cannot do this project with any less than seven units to be able to restore the front building to what the historical commission wants and to be able to restore, if I'm using that word correctly, Mike DeRozia, our environmental guy, will kill me, the wetlands to the level that it has to be. We need seven units to do this project. It's really that simple and we have been very consistent with that the whole time. In addition to that, in turning the units, we will actually go, Thad, help me on this, further into the buffer zone of the wetlands, correct?
But what Larry's saying is to lose one unit. Obviously, if we lost one unit and rotated it, it still would be a good way to develop the site, but obviously if we lost one unit and turned them, it wouldn't be less into the, would be less into the, the buffer zone. But we can't, we can't do that because of the economics of the project.
Also, in terms of having a, a marketable improvement to your tax base, a unit that's not just going to sit there and not get sold, the view that's available to these buildings is all out the back over the resource area. If you turn a unit, you're not looking into somebody else's parking lot. I don't think that's going to sell.
So.
So it's basically, it's essentially marketability and, and liability, economic viability of the project. It's a spreadsheet decision.
Not your decision. It's a spreadsheet.
We just, we just don't have a.
You just run the numbers.
We don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Thad, I want to go one step further. It's, it's not exactly all economics and, you know, the marketability for the view. All of your drainages on the abutting property flows to the back of that. We recognized that early on in the project. What we've done along that strip is develop a drainage system that intercepts that drainage system, brings it into our system for treatment. Now, if the units were rotated in that direction, which I pointed out, it prevents that type of treatment system being developed. So one, you don't want those units faced or put in that direction where all that storm water is going. So it was more than just economics and view. It was looking at the site as a whole, what was the best way to not only treat our site runoff, but the abutting property that happens to flow onto our site untreated, uncontrolled.
Thank you, Thad. And that's an important point because anything that you build, as everyone knows, we have to control any water that we create, right? We, we can't have it flow off. Well, not only are we doing that, we're handling all the water coming on our site, which in reality really shouldn't be happening, but we got that handled.
It's existing, so.
Correct.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Larry?
I'll counter with that and I think that the drainage could be redesigned between the unit and the line with the abut that they talked about handling the, the overflow from the other property. I think it could be done. So, you know, it, it couldn't be done the way it is today because if you turn the units, you'd be right over the top of pipes that they're proposing. But they're, they're from the positioning of different structures, which could possibly be changed, so.
I'm going to put this to the board because it sounds like one of those things that we have to resolve or, or let just hang in space forever. Six versus seven, economic viability of the project.
What is the real issue with the seven? Like what? It's kind of like, it's stuck in the corner there?
It's, it's not a.
Is it a density issue?
No, no, because I think they've said they've already proven their density, they've, they're permitted by right for this.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So it, it's just, you're, you're stretching this, this long length of buildings out. You have that little stubbed dead end that runs down there. It's not little, it, it expand, it, you know, goes across two and a half units, the face of two and a half units. And I think it would just be a better looking project if you twisted those, maybe 45 degrees, maybe 30 degrees. You're still going to get the, the view of the wetland. To some, you could stagger them. You know, it was an idea that when I looked at this, I said, you know, if it could happen, I think it'll make a little better layout.
So, so it's basically personal preference?
It's an aesthetics issue at this point?
Is it safe to say it's a purely aesthetics issue?
Pretty much, yeah. And then the access, I mean, the access, you're running down on that, that little...
I have a feeling of that stubby little piece of parking lot, that's where the snow is going to get pushed off during the winter. It will also be a lot easier to make turns in and out, but it will be up above when we close off that second means of exit. You're trading one end off to the other, and they, they don't work, leave it. Twist?
I'm okay with it the way it is.
The way it is?
I was curious, though, what if we just left it and twisted units six and seven a little bit? You know, is that possible? But I'm okay with it as is.
Good with it as is? Joey?
I'm okay with it as is.
Charlie?
I kind of like the twist.
You like the twist?
But because when I know what they're going to look at, if there are windows on this side, for sevens, let's say, that view is not the greatest if you ever wanted to look out the window.
No, they're going to want to look that way.
But there's no, the patio is, the deck is way over here.
So you see the wetlands.
Thad, twisting six and seven, also, and Thad corrected me from my own, also affects the buffer zone more. So that's why the best of all worlds with the seven units is, is what we have.
If I could also add a little sociology into this.
I always have sociology.
Teaching this subject and building these things for 40 years now, when you have a condominium setup, especially at the upper end, you want to make very sure that everybody's got the same amenities, or you'll have infighting and it'll be an unsuccessful community. This really is a community within a community that we're building, and we've taken those kinds of things that make a community we're living in and incorporated into all of our projects.
I can agree with you if all of the, the inside of the layout of the floor was equal, but there's nothing preventing that, that last tube from having a different setup inside, or making them a little bit smaller with the price a little bit less.
Well, the only thing that's affecting that right now is the setback distances. Some of them are maybe 10% smaller deck because of the way they're setting the buildings in and out. I mean, if you want a perfect consistency, you'd have a box, long rectangular box. This has a little bit more interest.
That's how it started, and that's what, we were complaining about that.
When you look at that picture that you have at the back, that, that looks like box.
I think a little bit they've staggered it and offset it.
The neighbors have actually commented on doing the back all one color instead of the multicolors.
I know, you said that before, and I asked the audience, and there was nobody...
Is someone...
Was there anybody there?
Anybody, any...
I'm a neighbor.
You're a neighbor, and you're across the pond, what's your name?
Janice Thompson.
Hi, hi, Janice, you're across the pond, you're going to be looking at this over the pond, over the pond?
Yeah, my backyard is going to be looking at all of those condos.
We're talking about the color, Jan.
The color?
Yeah.
I don't think it's a big deal. I think that the whole structure itself is, is a thousand percent better than what I'm looking at now.
Oh, yeah, okay. That's what we're trying to work for.
You know?
Yeah.
I think it's quite attractive.
Yeah.
And the fact that it started out flat and they, they've done what they've done to it, which has made, it's made it much more interesting.
That's why we have these meetings.
Much more appealing. I think, I think that's great.
Yeah.
See, I did behind these meetings.
Yeah. From day one, we all agreed the concept was great.
You don't paint, that's it.
I paint.
Yeah.
Anybody else with respect to the conversation, sir?
I'm John, I'm at 25 Cross, actually, which is pretty much directly behind the entire development.
Okay, you'll be looking at the backside of this?
I'll look at the backside.
You'll be, you'll be looking at...
We're next to an individual. But, you know, I just want to say that, I sat here and listened to this meeting of Enzo and Cabo, and I think that these gentlemen have, you know, several decades' experience of doing similar projects. I think that they conform to really improve the wetlands, first of all, protect the environment, clean up what, I've been there for 20 years. Settlers, part of the reason I moved up from PV up here was kind of the nostalgic type of feeling of the town, and that was kind of what I looked at as settlers. He's not there anymore, and I think this is a tremendous improvement to what I've been looking at for 20 years. I think that they want to do a high-end condo sale with the seven units. They got to put it into a spreadsheet, this is how they feed their families, but I think they're working with the town and the community to really improve the downtown area, so that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
I can also speak back for them as well.
Can I hear your name, sir?
Yeah, Barry Davies, Thompson Energy, 75 West Main Street.
Okay, you're on the abutter, or where's your view?
75 West Main Street, I received the abutter's notice, the letter.
Okay, within 300 feet, really? Okay.
Received the notice. They did a project near our facility in Danvers, and they did a great job, right next to our other facilities. We have a facility in Danvers and one here in Georgetown, and they really did, they cleaned up our old property and made it really, really nice.
Very good. Where, where in Danvers?
27 Cherry Street.
I know where it is. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anybody else comments about aesthetics?
I just want to speak to one other thing, I know...
Say your name again, please.
Sorry, it's Kelsey Schroeder, I live at 58 West Main across the street. I know a couple of the other abutters weren't able to be here tonight because they're working, and Stu is obviously in Germany. I did want to just bring up after you guys were talking about units five and six and possibly turning them, I know there are some abutters on Prospect Street down there, and they're just concerned about the light pollution from the residents as well, so I, I don't know if maybe turning, turning the units as Larry was suggesting would maybe like block some of that light pollution, or maybe adding some green space.
What is the light pollution concern you have?
I think they were just concerned about people coming in.
Where is the source of the light that you're referring to?
Just cars coming in the entrance and going, you know, hopefully their residences.
It would be so minimal.
And there would be...
From next door, from, from...
Help me out here, help me out, Charlie. I'm not seeing it.
Turning right from the gated entrance gate.
The one, the abutter that's right here, what is that, the Eagle Building?
That's the, that's the Eagle Building there. I have no idea what's back here.
Down the hill from, yeah, where exactly where you're saying.
It's all open there next door.
Thad, could you...
So cars can think that they can go through
On north, yeah.
That area, and then to reach yours.
Mr. Chair?
Where is, where is your, where's your limit of work? As far as, yeah, thank you, John, right there. Where's your limit of work, basically the property line? So, if I'm not mistaken, this is a wetland by, a wetland buffer? That's the wetland, and that's all grown?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm not seeing, are you talking about...
These are new plantings right here.
Yeah, right. That's why I'm saying that's the limit of work, but this is a wetland right here, and the, the property, the, the structure, the dwelling, if you will, where is that?
Yeah, exactly.
Where is, where is the dwelling?
Does he have trees and everything?
The Eagle Building, are you looking for?
I think, I know there's just one other abutter that I was very concerned, and she's on North Street.
Okay, because this is the, this is the Eagle Building.
On North Street. There is no abutter on that side.
Over here?
Oh, this back yard.
Can I say something for a second?
If you tell us your name, you can.
I absolutely will. So, my name's Rita Stone, I actually run the vintage vault in downtown. I also work with John, and I worked initially with...
We got a John too.
Okay, John, Colin, Tony. I worked initially with the back of the building and helping him do, you know, start getting some of the clean out, doing stuff inside it. My first trip over to the property, looking at the back, from what I understand, if I'm not mistaken, is where all the wetland or marshland or whatever you want to call it is, the grade actually goes up, and there's several trees, it's, it's a mess. I mean, I was disgusted when I saw the property, okay? It's a disaster, okay? So anything that they're proposing, I'm sorry, I'm just saying it like it is, anything that they're proposing is going to be better than what's there already. But when I'm talking, when you're talking about lights and people that are coming and going, it's a neighborhood, just like all the rest of the neighborhoods. I'm not quite sure why they think there's going to be a lot of nightlife activity going on in these townhouses. There are people that are going to be working just like everyone else, they're going to be coming home probably at five or six o'clock. You're not going to be talking about, you know, why is there this thought of this 11:00 at night, lights coming through, and where are the lights going when there's fences? If you go back in the property, there's fences, there's trees, and in addition to that, there's trash that's tossed over the fences, which had nothing to do with the settlers, but anyway, there's a bunch of stuff along there, but the building itself is in such disrepair, the amount of money that's going to be needed to take care of the main building to fix, when they're talking about economics. So, everything that they're talking about, you guys see it from a different perspective than someone who's been in it, through it, like, I don't know how far into the marshlands you went, but like, it's, it's pretty bad back there. But my point is, a lot of the stuff that they're talking about, if I'm driving with a car, my light beams aren't even going to be getting to where their houses are on the other side. And the other thing with the fence and all that other stuff, I'm sure that's probably already taken care of, but I'm just not seeing where anything that they're proposing is going to make the situation nothing but a thousand percent better than it is, and the safety standpoint of having that road as an emergency egress only, I think is a huge thing, just because of the fact that, just because nothing's happened so far, all you need is one event, and if it's your mother or your child that's living in those buildings and someone can't get to them, that road all of a sudden is now going to become the most important road that there is. So I'm 100% for this for several reasons, but one of the things is that it's going to be aesthetically better, and I'm a huge animal lover, so that background property really just sent me off the deep end when I saw how bad it was back there and how polluted it is. So from that perspective, I think it's a great thing, plus having a nice, like, more activity in the downtown only helps all the other downtown businesses. It just makes everything better. I mean, people want to have a nice downtown area, in order to do that, you need to give and take.
A vibrant downtown requires a critical mass of people.
Mr. Chair, if I could just say two things.
Can I just ask one thing, though? We, I don't remember, forgive me if I missed it, did we have a photometric plan for this? We did not?
I don't think so.
Would you recommend one, Larry?
I didn't recommend one, but I did speak to the, to the lighting, and there was a response from their engineer about the lighting, if you want to look at it.
Are we going to get there tonight, or...
I wasn't going to bring that up tonight, but it is.
Can we, can we just briefly touch on it? I know it's getting late, folks, but bear with us here, let's try to get as much as we can done tonight, and that way we're just that much closer to...
We would appreciate that very much.
If you go to...
We're looking at your original, or...
If you look at Mr. Barry's August 17th response, do you have that?
Yeah, yeah.
Go to page eight, item number six on page eight. I didn't find any details of the lighting, I saw the site lighting, there was only three places that are noted on the site where lighting was shown. I noted the commercial retail and residential overflow parking area should be lit, residential exit drive, which is in discussion tonight, should also be lit, and if there are streetlights which aren't shown, it would be nice for the board to know where they are along the main street. The response was the proposed buildings will provide the localized site lighting, with the site lighting being used for the parking and travel lanes, lights can be placed near trees. So, again, I think I only identified several, three, maybe three sightlights shown on the site, so.
We can provide lighting specs.
Photometrics.
Photometric plan is part of the submission.
Okay. So you want a photometric plan on this?
Yeah, a quick photometric plan. That would be, that would be helpful, that'll help us address that. Larry can review it, you can look at it.
These are the light stanchions here, if you want to look, there's one right there, and there's one right here.
See how that, see how that all works, and Larry can figure out where the, where the shadows are, and that'll help.
And these, these, the structure is going to be tall enough that it'll block any, any...
Lighting emanating from...
There'll be less lighting going into the neighborhood when this is done than what is there now with cars pulling down in the back. Also, on the lower end here, where you were talking, Mr. Chair, of the wetlands that run sideways?
Right.
The elevation there is so different that the lights couldn't hit it, but plus they'd be, would be putting trees, you know, bushes and trees there in addition to that. So, any lighting that they're talking about that's created by cars is going to be trapped within our...
More or less.
Yeah, so...
More or less, maintained on the site.
Right now, when a car pulls back there?
Is that satisfying, and I'm looking back here, does that satisfy you?
I mean, I think it sounds good, I'm not sure how Raquel will feel, but, you know, we'll go back to her and...
I can tell you this, much to everyone, everyone's disappointment, this is not going to close tonight, there will be a continuation, so, you know, you will, you, folks that can't make it, others will make it, express them what, what you can.
Can I make a comment about the lighting?
By all means, we're on the subject, please do. Could you say your name one more time, just so that the woman that transcribes this...
Janice Thompson.
Thank you.
23 Prospect. If there's cars going in and out to the townhouses at night is where you're going to get the headlights, it's going to be so minimal, they're not going to be out there with their cars with the headlights on for hours. They're going to go in, park, turn the lights off. So I don't even think that's a consideration.
It's like living on a cul-de-sac.
And, thank you, thank you for your, and the board takes all of this information, and, and we recognize a lot of the things that you're saying. Thank you, thank you. Larry?
Comment nine under planning general comments was about walls, the aesthetics, their suggestion, there's only two shade walls. I believe that the, if there's walls needed between each of these units, they're probably going to be very low, one, two foot maybe at the max. They're not showing any on the site plan, but they're proposing the shade wall along the northerly boundary and around this corner.
Oh, I didn't see that one.
Down here, that's, that's been in discussion, I would, it's, it's a, you've got a picture of it that they submitted with this letter, a colored picture.
Yeah.
It's a nice black wall, you know, it's structurally great. I question, I would like Thad to look into the radius there, to see if they can really turn it around, because when you separate these, you, you open them up, so I don't know how tight a radius you could do with that shade block wall.
Maybe if the shade block was a little smaller, the smaller shade block.
They do come, they do come smaller, but then, when you separate them, you start to open up the front space, so.
Yeah.
So maybe a little more detail about it.
Tough on the radio when you're using the big blocks, maybe you might want to consider a smaller, more architecturally aesthetically attractive, not so Fred Flintstone-looking.
How do you really feel about that wall?
Can I quote you on that in my notes, Fred Flintstone? Okay.
Under, under B2, we've talked about this a lot, and I have to agree with what John said about the width of that access. I, I think, I don't think you need two exits, I think it's going to create confusion on pulling in and pulling out, as well as you've got two exits where somebody's coming in, and I think that the six or so parking spaces that are directly in front of that entrance are going to be your primary spaces as opposed to the ones in the back. People are going to go to the ones that's closest to the door, and they're going to have to turn over two lanes of exiting traffic and back into two lanes to exit. So I would suggest that you try to stick with the 24-foot in and out, irregardless of whether you open up the exit lane or you close it for mercy purposes only.
Excellent question. Can I ask why you suggested the three? You, I suspect that goes back to earlier things that you, scenarios?
The three lanes actually function better. When you have two exit lanes, the issue here at the intersection isn't the right turn, it's the left turn. So if someone wants to make a left turn and he can't, or she can't, then everything backs up behind them. One wants to take a right turn, then they can go out. That also provides two lanes, so the car parked there won't be stuck trying to pull out, because there'll be a lane there most likely open, which is the right lane, because that lane has the easiest way to go. Keep in mind that that technique that we're applying right there to improve the traffic flow interior to this site is exactly the same technique that's used at the intersection at 97133. It's done because it works.
Well, yeah, that's, excuse me, that's 97133.
That's a high volume.
I don't, I don't see it here, Thad, I don't see it.
No, it, it works because it works. You have a left-turning restriction only due to traffic, so if in a peak time, someone making a left turn can't make it for obvious reasons, there's no other ability for anyone wanting to go right to move out. The technique is used in parking lots, intersections, it's just, it's just a simple solution to a complex problem.
God bless you.
More, more exit lanes than entrance lanes.
As, as we all know, because I'm assuming everybody drives, somebody's trying to take a left, it's a hard turn. It's a hard turn to make, it, it takes time to maneuver yourself into that lane. Right-hand turns, you're in and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really, it helps out with any driveway situation. You know, with this, is it busy enough to call for three?
That's, that's the whole thing.
Yeah.
How much of a tie-up is it when someone's waiting for that left-hand turn? And I get it, they will be waiting for the left-hand turn, Thad, I do get it. The question is, how long are they waiting? And what are the people behind it?
Other than a busy coffee shop in the area, it probably isn't warranted.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, this isn't 97 and 133.
It does make the parking situation better, and if we're looking at, you know, we can't all have our cake and eat it too, if we're looking at doing away with that other exit for the residents and making that all green space and bushes, you know, I think that three lanes even come more important, because that right lane that's going to turn right is going to be empty more because it's quicker, in case some emergency fire truck ambulance had to come in, they'd have that empty lane to come in if there was cars and the other two. I, I mean, it's, it's going to be a give and take.
But they're coming in the emergency exit, those firemen and the...
We won't have an emergency exit.
But it's all green now.
If we're doing it all green.
I, I suspect that the cars will get out of the way when the emergency vehicles will try and get in.
But where, will there be room for them to move in?
I don't see an enormous backup.
You're also complicating that with the parking that is perpendicular to your two exit lanes.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have that at the intersections that Thad's referring to, where it works good. You're coming out of a shopping center and you've got two exit lanes, and one to the left and one to the right, but you don't have parking spaces lined up on the side.
But Larry, right now, we have two curb cuts that are big there, and now we're only going to have one, no matter if it's three lanes or two lanes, even the three-lane one is smaller than when you combine those two curb cuts that are there now. So the parking situation on the street is totally dictated by the town. They want us to add another space, we could.
I'm not talking about on the street.
I think you're talking about the parking in the parking lot.
Inside.
Your six spaces that immediately are off of that.
This conflict here, a car here backing out or driving in.
I, I understand that as well, but what Thad said...
You're talking about out here, losing a spot, I get it.
But what Thad is saying with the three lanes there, there can be no argument there. If there's a third lane there that's turning right, that lane is going to be more empty on a regular basis than the others, so it's easier for those vehicles that are parking there to come in and out of their parking space. So I think we're, I think we're making that situation better.
Can I also add, without a drive-through?
Without a drive-through?
Without a drive-through.
Don't even mention it.
Coffee shops don't do well. They don't do nearly as well as coffee shops that have drive-throughs. Drive-throughs cause five times as much traffic to a site. You know, you might have a coffee shop, but, you know, Starbucks demands drive-throughs,[1767.25] You know, you might have a coffee shop, but, you know, Starbucks demands drive-throughs, Dunkin' Donuts.
But John, to be quite honest with you, I don't even know, why are we setting...
I'm just saying, there's not, there's not going to be an enormous amount of traffic, no matter what, going to the...
Why are they setting this up for failure? Well, Mr. Chair.
We're not big on drive-throughs.
But why, why are we talking about this in a negative? This isn't going to be that busy.
That's what I'm saying.
Like, like, why are we talking, why don't we build this so if it's not that busy, it works? But if it gets busy and you have successful businesses in Georgetown like we want, then it's still going to work. Like, why are we thinking so one-dimensional? It doesn't make any sense to me. That's not the way to build a successful project at all.
Well, I can explain part of that, John, is that when you get 19,000 cars on that street at the peak times, twice a day, that's our concern, as well as your project. So, if you want to just concentrate on the site, you, you do that, but we have to consider both.
We, we've said this to the board more than once. We 100% disagree with you and with Larry. Let me say it again, 100% disagree to only do two lanes there. If we're forced to do that, because you guys think it's better, and Larry thinks it's better, and that's the only way we're going to get this approved, we'll do it, but we 100% disagree with it.
Gotcha.
Do we know it? Let's resolve.
You can, and then we're going to resolve it with a...
I have lived here for 20 years, and you guys are all familiar with the downtown area. If you do go to those two lanes, and I'm sitting there like anybody else, and I want to go left, I'm going to make a right, I'm going to wrap around Ridge Hill, and I'm going to drive down Prospect Street.
Yeah. So, we're trying to avoid that too.
Traffic lights where I can make a left. So, the traffic will not back up, and the people are not going to sit there and go, I can't get across.
I know. I can't say that. I'm on the planning board. I can't say they're going to take our light and go, I can't say that.
I've lived here for 20 years, and that's exactly what...
I know, I can't say that though.
But are you saying...
I now begin my way through the town from Motor, the Bank and Crosby's, I'll just work through the back roads and move around. So, I think you should have the three lanes, just the traffic experts thinks that that would be the best way to move the cars. Just my opinion.
I'm going to, I'm going to bring it to the board. Bruce, what do you think? Three or two?
Three.
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 Three. Three.
Three.
Sorry, Larry.
It's fine. Three lanes and seven units, I'm betting zero tonight.
I must agree with you, so.
This is a first.
I'm going to shut up.
Bring it back, guys. Comment seven, Larry, comment seven.
And it's not that plan you see there, because you're going to lose that green space between there and the other...
Right, absolutely.
Okay, so you know.
The plan's going to change.
Comment number three. I, I suggested that they move those parking spaces that you won't be able to get in.
Larry, where are you? Where are you? Are we on page five? Because we never talked about the, the private contractor, or any of the comment about the trash.
I wasn't going to those, but if you, if you'd like to go to each of them, Harry, that's fine.
Don't these have to be resolved at some point?
Okay. Let's, let's do it.
Yeah, I know. We're getting there.
They suggested that they were going to have private contractor to do their trash and recycle services, because, you know, they have the dumpster there, which I presume was for the, for the restaurant.
Everybody in town does a private contract. There's no street, Georgetown doesn't pick up trash. Your question was, what was the question there? It was...
How are the trash and recycle services to be handled for the residential units?
For the residential units, which it doesn't show, because the only thing we see is a dumpster.
The dumpster, which is for the commercial.
It'll be private pickup. People will put their stuff out on pickup day.
Okay.
So, they'll go from the way back out to the front?
Or maybe a different collector.
So, like mellow trucks are going to come in there?
Come down here and then back out.
That's what you're thinking, right?
And then come down here and back out. That doesn't seem...
Does that seem, does that seem...
About a minute gate.
And, and I guess we'll throw that to you.
Well, we now have a gate that we didn't...
We're going to throw that to you. But you're going to make sure that works, right?
It's going to work.
Okay, great.
It's going...
I'm sure that's a minor thing.
Let's move, let's move along.
The next one was about mail service, because often you have a, you know, all your mailboxes for seven units, perhaps somewhere else on the site, where they drop back, pick up their mail, go to their unit. They're, they're suggesting that...
Or would it be like a key thing?
That's right.
Whatever the postmaster wants, were found in our, the sixth unit that Barry was talking about in Danvers. They wanted a, just like you said, a mailbox in the front of the driveway with keys.
Seven boxes.
Seven, yeah.
Right near the gate.
So, whatever the postmaster wants, that's what we will do.
Okay. Good. Resolve.
Okay, I just interject one minute.
Sure.
The fire chief wants to just address the board on one issue that hasn't been brought up yet.
We haven't touched base yet, okay, go ahead.
I'm the address for the, for the development conversation I had with John on the phone Saturday. Touched on, you know, using 51 West Main Street for the whole project, but the main building being, how many offices are you going to have in there, identifying them as suites?
And then the residential would be identified as units.
So, it'd still be 51 West Main Street, but if it was Unit 1, we know we're going to a residence. If we're going to a suite...
You know you're going to the commercial.
Commercial.
A commercial.
That sounds like such common sense that I can't believe we even be discussing it.
That was in my letter.
This was a conversation that John gets out to me about. So, instead of trying to, you know, change an address to the back by maybe use 52, it might get a little confusing.
We usually do the rear, we put 51R, and then the number of the unit. That's how I've seen it here.
Which is fine. I just can't see changing a number, you know, going 51R, changing it to 52.
I understand.
The tax assessor actually usually does not allow us to change the number.
Yeah, yeah.
The lot is number 51. And even, so I think what, what he has suggested, I did have in my letter, that you didn't have a copy of, was just that, that 51 and then commercials are suites, residents are units.
Everybody's good with that, right?
Yeah, we like it.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Great. How about snow storage?
That's number 11.
That's two things.
Number 11, go back to 10. Again, there was no, no details of the sign, or site sign or anything in the plans that I saw. I want to bring that up to board in case.
Larry, I'm sorry, I'm not following you. Where are we? Are we in your...
Number 10.
Number 10.
We're on this?
Yeah.
H10. H5.
That's because...
Okay.
That's on page 5. Yep. Number 10 on page 5. So, signs and sign details, we're lacking in the plan. I didn't see them anyway. You know, when the board wanted to see that, in the process.
We can start to throw those on the revised plan, can't we?
Yeah, and some of the things that we're throwing at us tonight will be helpful too, with the gated community and the driveway changing and...
Let's do this, let's get this...
Yeah.
Bang this out.
Okay, I think we can go to B3 on page 5. I had recommended that they shift those six parking spaces a little bit to the east. That would give some more distance for the maneuverability, that first space getting in and out from the...
That's out the door now with the three, three cars.
Well, it's, it will help with either, so 24 or 33. And, so, but they didn't do that, so they chose not to do that.
We talked about that, and I thought you were to agree with that, John.
Now, we're talking about three, three spaces anyway, right?
Yeah, we're changing.
We're changing that so...
We'll make the revision to the plan, and you'll see.
We can see what it looks like on the new plan, right?
Right.
It seemed like you had created a hazard by having the car back up where people are going to exit or enter.
It wasn't still going to happen, but it'll be a little more room for them to do that.
Can you, can you, can they do that, making it compact cars instead of these SUVs, trucks?
You probably...
Can you identify it so that smaller cars can use closer?
I think those are your primary. You probably don't want to, you probably don't want to restrict them at all. Would everybody, anybody that's driving anything get in and out?
They'll all follow in anyway. They won't listen to us too.
SUV backing up to prevent people from going in or out.
It, it's going to be a conflict there anyway. They're, they're very close to the entrance, exit, well, the two exit lanes and one entrance, so it's going to be, it's going to be a very desirable parking space that sometimes won't be accessible.
Who parked there?
You have a small car, I can go right by you.
You know, I just, yeah, I just want to say that, you know, do a lot of driving, like everybody does. A lot of things don't seem to have the potential of working on paper when you're planning stuff like this. But in reality, there's no problem.
You make it work.
Hmm, let's hope so.
I mean, it's the drive-through.
We're going to need, we're going to need DMTs down there.
You know, I always wonder how people have that much time to wait for a cup of coffee, but...
Just park and go in the place. Get faster.
It is faster.
Larry?
I think comment number four is, is going to go by the wayside. If you eliminate or make the northerly drive emergency only in some way, and you don't have that as an exit for residential. So, you need the width. However, I still think that there should be some provisions that, that will signage or something that's going to discourage the retail and commercial people from getting down into the residential spaces.
It's going to be a gate.
Isn't there going to be a gate?
A gate.
A gated.
On a gate.
A gate, residents only, maybe a little street, very, very tasteful sign, residents only.
We've talked about the parking. That's not a comment that's in the letter, but we talked about the parking. You know what you're getting. I guess you have to make any approval that you make clear that it's based on X number of parking spaces for a certain usage, square footage and/or...
I'm sorry, Larry, where are you, man?
I'm not on the letter.
Oh, God, okay. Trying to follow along.
He's had a full day. You've got to wind it down, Chairman.
Thank you for that. Pedestrian access?
Pedestrian access...
Something you consider on the revised plan?
Number two, actually, they show, oh, a walk connection between, and they did that. It was a connection between their sidewalk and the main street walk. That's been taken care of. Number two, I, I didn't particularly like this response, but again, if that northerly lane is going to be eliminated now, going to be emergency only, then it would be fine for people walking out of the residences to get up to the South Main sidewalk.
But again, that should be a sidewalk then, right?
It could be, it could be, you know, a gravel walk, a paved walk, a sidewalk. It could be done nicely if it's going to be, it depends on whatever...
It has to be wide enough for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, you, you guys are going to face this again. Is it going to be paved? Is it going to be grass pavers, support a truck?
That's exactly my point. If it's, if it's a sidewalk, it's going to have to be plowed, it's going to have to be clean.
Yeah, or if it's an emergency exit.
It's still going to have to be plowed.
Emergency exit needs to be plowed.
I think the...
We need to get clear with that.
Yeah, I think the easier way is going to be to show some sort of a sidewalk striping through the site, which is what you were referencing originally, because I don't think we are paving in any way that access point that we're removing. I thought we were doing green.
Yeah.
And maybe leaving the curb cut, so that it could be, that an emergency vehicle could drive over the grass, but we're not doing pavers and we're not doing all of that. So, I don't think we're proposing putting a sidewalk in down there. I don't think that's necessary. What we can do, to Larry's point, for, for the benefit of the residents as well as for the benefit, perhaps of people in the parking lot, show a crosswalk area where people can, can walk, so that they can get down to the sidewalk that is in front of the commercial building that will then get them out.
Basically, strike this somewhere in this area.
Yeah.
Yeah, strike, but the vehicle can still fit through.
Right, yeah. So, the people can get there. Again, I don't think there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic, but we'll, we'll address that in a simple way, but I don't think we're talking about doing a sidewalk in our now new green space.
That would be a good idea.
I think Thad's already has a few ideas on that one.
Yeah, to have a walkway right here that goes over to this walkway.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yep.
Yeah.
Paint it.
Yeah, just strike.
Those three dimensions.
Pause the three Ds, yeah. Let's see how it works in the first.
Probably one project ahead of you with that three D.
On, under item D1, I don't, I, I assume that the board didn't ask for a peer review of the traffic report. It was a huge volume. I scanned through it, I made some comments, and I think the takeaway that I grasped out of this letter was that that was the traffic review. I'm not a traffic engineer. That was not the traffic peer review. The board doesn't feel the need for it to address some of the things you've talked about tonight or anything else, you know.
You're talking about hiring an exterior peer reviewer to review the traffic study.
Yep.
Bruce?
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't know. I have, well, no, personally, I, I don't have a lot of confidence in, in traffic engineers.
So, you probably won't have all that much faith in a peer review.
Well, the thing is, extra eyes frequently are helpful. I'm a trans, I'm interested, I'm interested a lot in transportation.
Absolutely.
We are, we are in the midst of a traffic catastrophe.
Absolutely.
But... Here's the traffic report.
I don't see it.
Along with a few other things, but...
Did we get that?
Is there an L O S or D L S?
That was one of the early...
The original ones.
Thad, what's the level of service at the intersection? Do you know?
I don't even remember getting it.
It was part of the original...
It was early on we got it.
You get it?
I don't, I don't recall there was anything glaring at any of the intersections that were studied.
I'm thinking about that.
All right, nothing jumped out at you?
No, no.
If it was, if it was really, really bad, I think...
I would have brought it up.
You would have jumped on it.
You would have brought it up.
I, I personally don't feel as though we need a peer review of that.
Along with that appendix, there's this traffic, T I, traffic impact report. If the board wants to look at existing conditions and proposed conditions, that's what I looked at. Didn't see anything glaring in it.
John?
I was just going to say that you do know, as a community, as the region knows, 97-133.
It's perfect, it's wonderful, it's free and open all the time. It's a great, great road.
Yeah.
Not behind the Georgetown tunnel. I'm on board.
I suggested that 20 years ago.
I think the board resolved the most of the important traffic issues, which are the site functions on in and out. You've given direction tonight how you want to see that done, for both, you know, routine and emergency.
Utilities and lighting.
Yeah, utilities, the, the downwater, it was noted, and I think the water line is on the opposite side of the road. The only thing I bring up there was that, you know, we're going to shut down 133 for a little while when you go across the road, so you don't know...
Sometimes it hurts.
What this project, I mean, let's figure it out. Yeah, it's going to get, you're going to go half, half across, half across the next day, do it at night, whatever. And that's number one. Number two was that, and I think the applicant will be able to respond to this, but there seems to be a conflict running down the driveway, which is not going to be a driveway anymore more, so that can be taken care of.
Gone now.
Same thing with the gas going to the, the tie-in's not shown. They're going to talk to the gas company and work that out. The gas line, I think, is on their side of the road, if I recall. Underground electric, it's proposed to come out of the commercial and retail building on West Main. The plan doesn't show any transformers or handholds. Those things can be important. Screening of them can be important. Where they're going to be placed can be important. I don't know where the board might want to take this, but sometimes, like I say, they become important little pertinences to plans that pop up and are not particularly pleasing where they, where they put them.
And it's really crummy if it shows up where you're going to put your dumpster.
Yep.
Talk to them for us, because they put them where they want to put them.
Have you made an appointment with them to arrange this?
We actually spoke with them on the phone. I, we basically told him that we have a concept layout. When we find, we get the interior building up, up front with a good use, where we can give him a load. We need to have electric load for him to find out what type of transformer, where he wants it. We recognized early on that it would have to go somewhere up front. So, we're very much aware that a transformer has to go there. That's why we have things laid out the way it is. As far as I'll back, it was more or less how we were going to meter it, and otherwise, there was no real big issues with that.
Everybody comfortable with that? We're good?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Number five was about, I, I think it was an extra detail in the plans that I didn't think was necessary. It's a board of health matter. They didn't show all of the, all of the tanks, the pump chambers, et cetera, but they... They didn't show all of the, all of the tanks, the pump chambers, et cetera, but they did have the one larger one on there. They do show where the leach fields are gonna be, which the board can see on the plan. A lot of it's under paving, so.
Parking.
Can be done.
We already did six, right?
Number six, you've already talked about the lighting and how that's gonna be handled. Number seven, again, this is sort of picky, if you will, about some of the services of the gas, water, and sewer. I see some plantings. Look at units four and three and four, I think. You've got water services with a tree right over the top of them, things like that, that those details need to be, you know, looked at in the end. This plan might be, this is what we intend to do, but we'll move the water line two feet one way and the sewer two feet the other, and that's how we'll resolve it. And that's, that's fine, but point to bring up. Drainage and grading, I suggest, and we can go through it tonight, but I have a meeting set up with Thad tomorrow at my office to go through the issues that we have pointed out in our earlier letter with the drainage, and we're, I'll just say we're not, we're not on the same page with him, so.
Well, let us know if you can't come to some kind of an amicable solution.
Yep.
And we'll resolve it at the next meeting. Overflow is removed, test pits. Any other ones here that you're...
Is that the first one here?
Raised a little bit of...
I don't understand.
Anything else here, Larry?
No, that's all drainage and grading is the last step.
From this point on, it really...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
It's all...
Can I, can I ask a question too?
Sure, absolutely, of course.
Larry, the first that we're hearing of the drainage situation that we're not on the same page is tonight.
Read this letter.
Oh, is that, is that the one that we just got yesterday?
Yeah.
No, the one that you got yesterday says we have a meeting, or we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow with Mr. Barry to work on the drainage and grading, and any resolved issues, we'll bring back to the board as air and just...
It's not always working.
But when we spoke, it wasn't like that we weren't on the same page, it was like we have to meet the certain Massachusetts, you know, the guidelines, and you just want to have explained to you how he's doing that with what you're looking at.
Or I want him to do it.
So, okay.
And you guys, it's very common that...
Between Thad and I, I think more, you know...
This happens all the time.
I'm paying for it and doing it, so I'm involved.
Oh, you're thinking billable hours. Well, getting a little bit late.
Yeah.
John? Where, where are we here? I think we, I think you have plenty of direction at this point.
Yes, we do. We appreciate this time.
And, yeah, and it's getting late, and we still actually have a couple other things we have to deal with, one or two. Anything right now that's off in anybody's mind that we need to give direction here?
I think we're good, yeah. I think we're good.
We're very fortunate tonight that we were able to put this much time.
Oh, this is how it should be. This is how it should be.
You know, so we got a lot of work done. In the productivity we were missing the last couple of meetings, we were able to achieve tonight.
We made up for it. It happens.
So we've come a long way with finalizing things. You need to work on these plans quite a bit and work out the drainage and grading issues with Larry. So the golden question is, when you want all this work to be done and be ready to come back before the planning board?
We'd like to be on for the, your first meeting in October. Certainly not in, two weeks is not enough time.
Is that reasonable? You have a lot of plan drawing here.
A lot of connecting people.
Okay, if it's reasonable.
Because we already have the meeting scheduled with Larry tomorrow, I think is a big, a big help.
It's drawing the plans. I mean, sometimes, sometimes plans can be drawn quickly, sometimes they can't. It sounds like some of the things that we're talking about, you'll be able to turn that around. And keep in mind, it's not delivering it that night, it's delivering it a full week before that.
In advance, yeah.
One of your members are gonna be gone?
I'm gonna be gone for our next meeting.
The next one.
September 25th. You'll be back.
I'll be back in October.
So what's the October meeting? Help me out, somebody? The 5th of October?
The 9th.
The 9th of October? 9th of October?
That's right, 5th is a Saturday. Yeah. Yeah, 9th, yeah.
The 9th of October.
I have a question.
What's your question, John?
Our extension for our conversation before this meeting. We have an extension through September 30.
I'm here.
I have a question, where are my glasses?
Form H here, ready to be executed.
Thank you.
And we do go quarterly, so you know the score, and it's through December 31st. But we're not gonna wait till December 31st.
No, you're not.
You're probably gonna have a final decision from this board before the holiday.
I would hope. We've made wonderful progress.
There's three holidays before, between now and the end of the year, right?
October what, 5th?
9th.
I thought that far.
All right, so we're...
So what do we need to do? We need to vote for a Form H here or something?
Yeah.
I'll accept a motion for a Form H extension for 51 West Main. Expiration December...
31st.
31st, 2019.
I move to accept the extension request through 31 December 19, 2019, concerning review of the application.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joanne. Any questions, any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, 5-0. Anything else that we need to give to you for direction or...
No, I've been taking detailed notes, so I think we're...
You're good at that.
Yeah, I'm trying. I think we, we understand what we need to do. We need to get you a few things, which we will do a week prior to October 9. And I think we've got our, our direction, so hopefully we'll be in good shape that night.
Someone wanna make a motion to continue?
Mr. Chairman, I move to continue the site plan review public hearing for 51 West Main Street. Date specific to the 9 October 2019 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to continue. If you're listening in the audience and you're a butter, you're concerned, October?
9th.
9th.
At 7?
On or after 7? Yeah, yeah. Absolutely, you're supposed to do, you're supposed to do a time specific, it's supposed to be a time. Am I right or wrong?
No.
No?
The, the time of your meeting at 7 o'clock, I, I wouldn't give them specific times, 'cause that messes up your agenda when you do that.
But you can always do it after.
You can always do it after, but you can't do it before, so then sometimes you end up, somebody continues ahead of you, and then you're sitting here for half an hour.
Right, if you do it that way.
When should I be here, Saul?
7.
7.
The attorney said 7 o'clock.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearings continue, hearings continue, you guys get to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the time, appreciate all the...
Thank you very much.
Gotta get the timer, big time. Okay. And this can go away. Larry, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, really.
Okay, where are we, please? There was, there was, they, there's a question.
'Cause I wound up with two copies of the agenda.
You don't have it.
Yeah, I had two in the agenda too.
Maybe we're just...
Maybe they messed up.
I knew you were gonna lose one.
I think they messed up.
At this point in the day, I'm feeling really stressed.
All right, so what are we doing?
Okay, what we're doing is waiting for John, so that's...
I'll, I'll...
Oh, yeah, the turning leaf.
I think I did.
Hurry up, we gotta pee. Is that the letter we, is that the letter we were supposed to get, but we didn't get?
Let me run to the corner office.
Absolutely, what you gotta do, Bob, absolutely.
Sure you get it?
Bob, you have a problem with dealing with turning leaves?
No.
Should we take up turning leaves, John? Should we take up turning leaves?
Yes, yes.
Wanna walk us through this?
Yeah.
Oh, turning leaf, thank you.
How are you?
Very well, very well, how are you?
I'm well.
And so, I assume, could you give us your name again?
Yes, I'll, I did, do you want me to start? Melissa Ogden for Man, for Man to Man, the Turning Leaf Georgetown LLC.
Thank you. We're dealing with the release of the surety.
Yes, and a termination of the tripartite.
Yeah, so termination of the tripartite, oh, it's total. I thought it was terminated, and it was, never mind. But anyway, evidently, we've put, Joe, we've gotten some kind of a letter here with respect to this case of before.
Even though that letter is months old, this whole issue of this development getting to this evening has been postponed relative to conservation commissions resolving outstanding issues. Those issues have been resolved.
I was, I was gonna say, you know, have they been resolved? So it sounds like essentially, we're looking to release the final, I don't know, how much is it?
Is, the final amount is $48,559.96.
Okay, and the town withheld that because there were required to hold a certain amount per linear foot after the roadways are accepted at town meeting. They have to hold for a year a certain amount per linear foot. The year is up, is my understanding? We withheld it, now it's time to release it. John?
The issues that are cited by the, about our owner of property within, those are public issues. Peter has already agreed to put a stop sign. It was going to be a yield, but that wasn't really the proper signage. A stop sign there is the proper signage. Town hasn't done it yet, but it's their responsibility to do that. Peter understands that. And all the landscaping issues within the right of way.
Within the right of way, I get it, that's ours, but there's, there's a discussion here about landscape issues in a backyard, and I'm not understanding...
So back in the spring, there were some landscaping issues raised in connection with getting the sign out from Dave Varga. My client did walk the site in early April. They made some adjustments, they walked the trees sometime in May, and it was determined, and Dave Varga signed off on it, that the, it was basically that they were budding and hadn't, that's my understanding, hadn't become, you know, trees, that it was in the early stages of the spring. What's that?
That's an issue they were budding?
They were, no, they were, it was spring, so they didn't have any leaves or flowers in the trees.
Wow.
'Cause it, 'cause of the time of the year.
Oh, no, no, that wasn't what I was talking about. Dave may have raised some issues about trees not, not surviving through the season or something. That's not what I was referring to.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
This is, this is talking about extremely overgrown and unsightly...
Isn't...
Per tree, there was no expectation this would be maintained. Who's responsible for maintenance?
Isn't this the person's property, I believe, but she was...
This is what I'm talking about.
This is, this is the, with planting strips in front of property.
Okay.
Some people take care of this as part of their property, and some people don't, and expect the town to do it, because it's within the right of way.
Whose land is it?
It's within, technically, it's within the right of way.
It's in the right of way?
Yeah.
So Peter's on top of it?
So that's land, that's town land.
Peter, there was an issue earlier in the season where trees were overgrown, that they were properly manicured.
Okay.
And he was going down there, I believe, and did go down there and trimmed the trees on.
Okay.
This planting strip that's between the curbing and the sidewalk.
Right.
You know, it's right of way area, it is typically that area, that strip of planting is maintained by the property owner who directly abuts it.
Usually.
Usually.
Usually, yeah, because it abuts your lawn.
And that's what these concerns are.
Evidently, this doesn't abut the lawn.
You know, the town with its limited resources, limited person power, you know, may and may not get to it, you know, in any given day. But it's not going to be manicured like a landscape company would come every week and do it, or every other week. It's when he gets around to it. And, you know, but these, these overgrown areas that are being talked about are within the public right of way, you know.
And this, this, this person's asking for plantings?
No.
Yeah. I would like consideration for evergreen planting to provide sufficient visual auditory between the rear of my property and the street.
Yeah, but you know what, that's now within, it's within a public right of way, and the town can do it if the town wants it, but we've already accepted the right of way in the roadway.
Yeah, I don't understand why that wasn't brought up.
Did this applicant get this letter?
Okay.
The, this applicant.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And how did, did you submit something to tell us how you resolved your share of this?
No, because it was our position that it's, it wasn't, it's not our, we, there's no way we could've resolved, 'cause we don't own the land anymore. We deeded that in 2018 to the town.
But now you're asking for a refund.
Right, we've met all of our, we've, we've met all of the requirements that were set forth in the approvals, and we're at the point where we've deeded the town, and a year has passed, so we feel that it's our right to request the termination of the bond and receive our release of funds.
It's their money, we have to give it back to them.
And the only reason we were holding it had to do with conservation commission, which they have.
I thought we held it also because of the plantings, that we wait a year or so before to see...
Yeah, to make sure that they're...
That they took.
There's no dead vegetation, that's been verified by Varga.
Well, I would... That's what I was talking about, that there was a, the same, I believe the same resident brought up that.
Well, I think this applicant should have a letter.
Motion?
There is not a motion other than if the board wants to verbalize one this evening.
So what is the amount, please?
It is, sorry, it is $46,000, $48,559.96.
Did I get that right? 48559.96.
Yeah, and I actually have a copy of the, I don't know if you have the...
Does anyone wanna make a motion to release the final surety for Turning Leaf subdivision?
I make a motion to release the final surety in amount of...
48559.
48559, and how many cents?
No, no, you know what, no, stop. Stop, just make it all the remaining funds.
All the remaining funds in the surety for Turning Leaf.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second. So the motion isn't a number, it's all the remaining funds, because sometimes what happens is you were given a number tomorrow, interest is there, and there'll be three cents in this, and...
Yeah.
So all in favor of releasing all the funds remaining in the account, in the tripartite for Turning Leaf subdivision, say aye.
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 That's everybody? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
We'd also like...
Listen, how much you think you're going to get tonight?
Sorry, we'd also like you to sign the termination of the tripartite agreement.
Termination of, what is the difference?
It's just one document, and I'm hoping that you can sign it. And it, we give it to the bank, and it releases everybody. It's, it's a matter of course. It's a termination of the agreement.
Yeah, this is, this is a technicality that I'm not familiar with.
Excepted the roadway at the Springtown meeting a year ago.
Yeah.
So we're approaching
See, what I'm confused on is this. My understanding of that amount per square foot, per linear foot of roadway that was to be held, I did not think that that could remain in a tripartite agreement. I thought that had to be in an account in the name of the town. But, so this is very, very different to me. I would have thought that with, with final release of funds that this would have already been gone. But what do I know?
It's still a secured surety, though.
It's a surety.
Absolutely. Okay, so we need to vote to terminate the tripartite, end apartheid agreement? Tripartite agreement for
Between Turning, Turning Leaf and Redding Co., and the town.
Someone want to make a motion to that effect, yes?
So moved.
So moved. Till he's made a motion to terminate the tripartite agreement for Turning Leaf subdivision. Is there a second?
A second.
Second is made by Joanne. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I presume you need a signature?
From you.
From moi.
From you.
And, Mr. Chairman, while, while you're getting signatures while we're talking. I think this resident deserves an answer from, perhaps John can compose one.
This is to the planning board?
Yeah.
Why?
Well
It's also
I've been in contact with them a lot. And, you know, I'm working with
Actually, yeah, she's not, this is not
And I've been working with them, you know. It's just, again, the trees have been trimmed.
Right.
And, you know, these are, these trees are probably, what, five years old now?
I have the full packet with the exhibits, if you want that.
All the trees within the right of way have to be trimmed. That's the jurisdiction.
For a resident that writes a letter, my, whatever it is, I think that they deserve an answer.
Yeah.
And I think a written one would be sufficient. So if you could just, you know
And the other thing, you know, we first
Say that you've made an effort to contact these people that are responsible for your issues.
I think you're signing freely and
Yes.
I think that's all. I think
Under light duress?
We got a lot, we got a lot of communication from her from day one from this application. So I think it would, it doesn't set too well for a resident to make this effort and not get a response. And it doesn't help the planning board either.
Well, one of the questions I have is, why wasn't this all resolved at the very beginning? I was of the mind that everyone was satisfied, and I'm not understanding. I'm not understanding that. But, anyway. One last thing, folks, remember number seven? Sorry to ignore you, but thank you very much.
That's okay, thank you.
Item number seven on the correspondence is a letter that we were sent. And there's a hack, it's on the back. Yep, you've got it, Phil.
This one here.
Thank you very much. Evidently, the building inspector is waiting to hear from us to see if we want to have initiate, or have the church, what is it, the By Faith Fellowship Church?
Yeah.
Come in for a site plan approval?
They don't want to do it.
I don't understand this.
They're, they're requesting a waiver from it, I mean, which is certainly their right to do. John?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. They're, they're going for an occupancy permit. They go before the, the, the building inspector. And the building inspector says, you know, you need to sign off from the planning board.
That's they don't want to come to us and get the
Yeah, and they're asking for it. John, you probably, why am I, why am I even speaking?
Oh, you're doing a good job.
No, go ahead, please.
Would not interrupt the chairman. This is the church that was at the corner of North Street in West Main. And it just wasn't a conducive location for them. So they were able to acquire the VFW property. They're not proposing to expand the existing building, and they're not proposing to add any parking spaces or anything. They are renovating the interior of the building, taking bars out and putting views in. They, you know, it's a small congregation.
Take them for
You know, the expense of having to go through proposing or submitting a site plan and going through all of that, you know, they just basically don't have the money for it. And zoning wise, you know, it's a small church. They, they feel that they'll be able to properly locate on that property and not cause any parking concerns or, you know, disturb their surroundings. The other thing is, all religions have the right to locate where they
Wherever they choose.
Yeah.
An exemption.
Yeah.
48 exemption.
And they're not going to change the building.
Right, they're not changing it. What about the tank? The tank?
It's not fun.
Oh.
Can we have
It's probably somebody, they'll probably raffle that off for, you know, or something.
But that's the town's, though, isn't it?
The collect, somebody's going to Somebody's going to do something with it.
The VFW owns it, right?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's really conducive to a church.
I, I don't know what it costs. I don't know what the, what is, I'd have to look at the, the schedule of fees. What, what is a site plan review cost for submitting?
Well, if you had to put a site plan together?
Yeah. Oh, I'm just talking about the fee.
The fee, $450.
$450? How about the, how about they just come in and tell us what their, would that be
Their plans are
Yeah, without a formal, and we can consider waiving this then. How's that sound? Come in in an informal way.
The only reason they're not here, this, this request came in so late.
So glad they're not here. I want to go home.
Yeah, no, it was, it was so late, and I wanted to try to accommodate this situation.
Absolutely.
So the only way to do that was a form of communication initially. And, yeah, they're willing to come in, so I'll put one for the next agenda.
Absolutely, put them in the next time. Absolutely, that would be great.
You know what? It's a great reuse of an existing site. Nice to buy it and
And maybe we'll find out what's going to happen to the tax.
Yeah. Someone's going to put that on the front of their lawn.
Yeah. Going to go on eBay?
Next, oh, fancy.
Start rolling into
The veterans are going to let go. I haven't been waiting to hear a motion.
Side person.
I make a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Ah, there's a motion
The February 11th, 2019.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ah, motion's made and seconded, and the ayes have it. Night, everybody.